All right, welcome, everybody. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 12, 2017. Our meeting is at the Veterans Memorial Hall, starting at 6 o'clock. And for the record, we do have a quorum, and all council members are present, and we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin tonight in memory of Dr. Bob Taft, who is the Chair of our Planet Commission, who passed away September 9. Just wanted to do a moment of silence in his memory. Next on the agenda, we have a pledge of allegiance, and we're going to invite our public safety officers from Fire, Police, and Harbor to lead us in the pledge remembering Patriots' Day, which took place yesterday. Commander Cox, you're going to lead us in that?
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, Council, City staff, thank you for having us. We're here, as you stated, to celebrate and honor 9/11, those that sacrificed for us. And I would just like to say that for most of us here, and most Americans, September 11th, 2001 changed our lives. For many of us, it left an impact that has shaped who we are, how we live our lives, and what we believe in. We watched as Americans came together, they worked together, they persevered together to honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Among those were 72 law enforcement officers, 343 firefighters, 55 military personnel, and over 2,500 civilians. All of their lives mattered. Sometimes we need to be reminded that unity and working together is what makes this such a great country, and that division, sometimes no matter how small, will always create separation and steer us away from that unity. Today, you can tune into any news channel and see more and more of our society at war with each other, where political or self-fulfilling views will often outweigh morality, common sense, and even the kindergarten basics of right and wrong. I would just like to say that on behalf of the Morro Bay Police Department, the Morro Bay Fire Department, and the Morro Bay Harbor Department, we are extremely grateful and thankful for the support of our community. We take our job serious, and our commitment to this community very seriously. And with nearly 30 years in this profession, for me personally, I have not experienced a better community to live and work in than that of Morro Bay. You know, we are often asked, "How do you measure effective success in law enforcement?" Well, it is not by the amount of crime, but by the absence of it. And that is our goal, and it is accomplished by the dedicated men and women of our public safety departments in Morro Bay. We're very proud to represent the city of Morro Bay, and we believe that Morro Bay is the example that more of America should follow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great start for the meeting. Thanks very much. Great words, great to reflect on. Next on the agenda is a closed session report. Mr. Penone?
Thank you, Mayor. There were three items on the closed session agenda. They were all discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Thanks very much. And following that, we have council members' reports and announcements, and I'll start off with just a couple. We do have some Slocog representatives that are going to speak to the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. It's a 20-year vision, and there is a survey that's going to be kicked off. We will have some representatives that talk a little bit more detail about that. And as a Slocog board member, participated with Councilmember Marloes McPherson at a roundabout workshop in Pass Robles that was also hosted by Slocog. There was also a technical workshop for the public works professionals that took place the following day. And that's all I have to report at this time for any boards and announcements. And Matt? Red?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our Super Morro Bay citizens. That's Chuck Stoll, for the many ways that he contributes to our community. Chuck is a past president of the Lions Club, both in Cayucus and in Morro Bay. He's helped many organizations through the Lions Club with their fundraising efforts. He's also a leader at the Senior Center, helping out with transportation. He chaired the Amgen Volunteer Group for the past two years when we hosted the event here. He's an active worker with Morro Bay and Bloom, and he has adopted the urban forest that the Blooming's planted and makes weekly waterings of the trees out of his pickup truck. Chuck's active in a lot of communities, activities that help to improve our city, and I want to publicly thank him for all the things he does. If you're interested in using the community pool when it opens, you can help the Recreation Department by filling out the online Community Pool Center. It's a survey. It's on the city website. I filled it out, and I couldn't get the mail-in button to work, so I printed it to give to the rec office. So if you want to do the same, you can just fill it out online and then print it. And I'm going to speak for the rest of the council, because they like it when I do that. You can print it out and give it to any one of us, and we'll make sure it gets to the right place, or give it to staff people. Over on the screen, you can see Morro Bay Friends of the Library is doing their fabulous book sale on Saturday, September 23. Thousands of books, DVDs, CDs, there's even VHS tapes. It opens at 9:00 for members of the Friends of the Library, and the public gets to go in at 10:00. And besides all the usual books that they have for sale, they also have a lot of books for children, holiday section, and plenty of books for the giving season. One of the things that I like to do when I travel is to collect bookmarks from various places that I visit, and to share with the people I work with. So I brought home this time bookmarks from the Oregon Coast and lighthouses that I'm sharing with council and staff tonight. So those of you who sat down and found a bookmark, it's for me. I will be out of town this coming weekend, so I will not have office hours this week. So. Marloes already has hers. She got the songbirds. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Red. I just didn't know if there was any more you wanted to speak to for the council. Thanks. And with that, John?
Good evening. Welcome. Wanted to announce that on September 23, at the Senior Center, I will be having my third quarterly open house, to just make myself available as a single council person to answer any questions you might have. The topic of the evening that I'll open up with is a view of Morro Bay's legal costs and benchmark comparisons. And then I open it up to anything you may want to talk about, and any questions you may want to ask me as your representative. Also want to remind you that it is flu prevention season. That starts in September. For those of you so inclined, please get your flu shot. It helps prevent significant disease, it decreases absenteeism, and improves the health over all of our community. So let's get our flu shots this year. Thanks. Marloes?
Sure. I just wanted to welcome everybody. It's nice to see so many people out in the audience this evening. I just wanted to alert everybody to Sea Otter Awareness Week, which is an annual event. And this year is going to be from September 24 to the 30th, and it's an opportunity for people to learn about sea otters and their importance to our bay. And if you know, I think most of you know who live here, that you can go down to Target Rock, and you can oftentimes see the sea otters, and that's where state parks will be every day during that week, daily, from Sunday through that following Saturday. And there's activities down there, and they'll be there from 10 to 2:00. So I'll stop by and visit them. Thanks.
Thanks, Marloes. With that, that concludes our announcements and reports, and we'll start off with, we do have two presentations. Our first presentation is the Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Presentation. And Erica, are you leading us off with that? And then we have Rideshare Week from our Slocog representatives coming up after that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. Thank you very much for having me here. My name is Erica Crawford. I'm with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, and the CEO and President, going on almost two years now, believe it or not, in January. I'm going to do this.
Thanks, Erica.
Thanks. We're just going to take you through, this is our Quarter Two presentation, but given the big weekend that we just had with avocado margarita, I took this moment to put in some information at the end of this, so we can have some up-to-the-minute info on that. As usual, I like to start with our mission and purpose. To reiterate that, we are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. We function somewhat like a trade organization. We are here to empower business. We do that through four major goals, and I'll read those. We've got, "We create a strong economy." "We are here to promote the community." "We're here to provide networking opportunities." "We love cats." I don't know if anybody at home can see, we have an adorable cat walking around. "And we advocate for our member investors with city and county government." So that's kind of who we are at our crux. And this is a good moment to review that, because we are in our board recruitment season. So we have three board positions. If anybody is interested, please contact me at the chamber. I'm here to report Quarter Two stats. We snuck in July, we have the information ready for our visitor center. So we're at 695 Harbor Street. We did see some slippage in traffic in Quarter Two, and we kind of are attributing that to Highway One closure. That was April, May, June. To pivot, we did set up a kiosk down at the Main Street Market each Saturday. So we were staffed by two really bright, really cool high school kids. They're from Morro Bay High School grads, or students. They were there to engage people, talk about Morro Bay, hand out visitor guides, and also to collect data. So we have a little bit more of a mailing list ad that I supplied to Jennifer, so we're sharing that information. Let's see. We did see about 800 to 1,100 people at each market day down there, so it's pretty significant. Some of our events and initiatives in Quarter Two, we were busy. We did three mixers, four actually, three stacks in a rock brewing company. We had some dogs, which Humane Society came. We did two joint mixers with the Los Osos Chamber of Commerce. We think that's great, to kind of extend the communication across the bay. We're very close. All of the Chamber executives in the county get together monthly, and it's nice to be able to see Chamber members from two different chambers mixing it up. Doug at Junk Love hosted the mixer with Los Osos on the Embarcadero, and then Michael at the golf course did an amazing job with the mixer on the 21st. We also had a couple of educational programming events. So we've partnered successfully with the Mission Community Services Corporation, and also with SCORE. And we've provided workshops for business owners on things like Facebook, Instagram, things that people can do right now to improve, to kind of increase their reach, to get more customers and more business. We also did a Constant Contact email series with SCORE that was very successful. I look forward to bringing that back. Economic Development Roadmap, that's on our agenda tonight, or your agenda. I'm here to support it, and we can talk about that later, but we are very excited about it. You know, the way we see, so what's the plan? The way we see it, it's really about creating place. It's about revitalizing our economic future, challenging our perceptions, you know, what are we doing in Morro Bay? How are we moving things forward? How are we preparing for the future? And then, you know, what can business owners do at this very moment, without waiting for big projects and big things happen? We could create curb appeal, you know, maybe it's time to do a fresh coat of paint, change your window. We can absolutely start talking about four distinct economic centers here in town, not just two, or not just three, or not just one, four. And then getting involved in the chamber. We are, you know, we're trying to be a convener of leadership. We're looking for leaders to get involved and to take these things forward. And of course, talking to the city council. You guys are very accessible, and we very much appreciate that. Main Street Market, I'll zip through. We are currently undertaking a strategic planning session and effort with this market. We're happy with it. It's great. We had 11 markets. Vendors are loyal, they're amazing, and they sell really cool stuff, you know? And we've got great produce, and we've started to highlight that. So right now, it's heirloom tomato month, so if anybody wants to zip down, Part of Paso Produce has the most beautiful tomatoes, and you can pick up a gift at the same time. So that, it's about $76,000 in total gross sales that vendors are earning, just in Quarter Two. So now avocado margarita festival. We did it! I need to say thank you, sincere heartfelt thank you to the citizens of Morro Bay, residents, all of the volunteers, everybody who comes together to make this a success. It is quite a feat, and this year, it was a larger feat than it has been in the past. So how do people find us? About 11,600 ticketed people came to the event this year. We had probably 12,000 people on site, if you include vendors, volunteers, things like that. We had a larger footprint to accommodate them, so thank you to city staff for accommodating that. We needed it. We were from Harbor to Marina Street this year. We had a Grom Zone for kids, a kids area, that was a great success. The Lunatic did an amazing job, and was cute, and Morro Bay High School actually did performances. But so how did people find us? We bought advertising in 805 Living Magazine, so we covered Malibu to Paso, in addition to local press. But Travel and Leisure Magazine picked up the festival as one of the top 12 fall festivals in the nation. And then Smithsonian Travel also picked that story up and kicked it out. So it doesn't just benefit the chamber, this is our largest fundraiser of the year, but it also benefits Morro Bay Rotary, Morro Bay High School Music Boosters, and the Morro Bay High School Cheer. They are beneficiaries that are bought into the success of this festival, so we cut them checks for their participation and as beneficiaries. We look forward to doing that every year. We look forward to the fact that it's going to be even more this year. For online presence, just in the last 60 days, we had 49,000 page views of our website, 20,000 visitors, 21,000. The top five cities who are finding us on the web, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Fresno, Bakersfield, and San Luis Obispo. And the top ways that they are finding us, it's through Facebook. Our social is off the charts, you know, people are finding us that way, absolutely. Google, organic searches, direct, you know, seeing a poster and putting in avomargfest.com, morrobay.org, absolutely from the city's website, and visit Slow County. We had 1,895 clicks to the Jackrabbit booking site on morrobay.org from our website. So that's pretty significant. Facebook stats, we like to look at engagement rather than just reach, but engagement was almost 44,000 just in the last 30 days. We had 34,000 people watch a video that we posted. Our ending fan count is almost 8,000. And then outcomes, these are super preliminary outcomes. It just happened on Saturday. But we put a survey out to all attendees via social, and we've already received close to 350 responses, so that's what this is recommending, or this is actually talking about 330, because at 2:00 it was about 330. So 28% stayed in hotels and motels, 5% stayed in vacation rentals, 9% in campgrounds. 58% reported that they shopped, ate, or played in town on either or both of Friday and Sunday. 47% said that they spent more than $50 outside of the festival, and that's not including accommodation. 82% of attendees are likely to recommend the festival to a friend or relative. And up at the top, those are solid occupancy stats. I vetted them through Jennifer, and we made calls to every hotel. So we're looking at a 95% occupancy for hotel and motel on Friday, and 97% for Saturday. I have to say also, though, that this was one of two Cal Poly weekends, you know? So we were at 90% occupancy last year. We thank the city of Morro Bay through tourism for their sponsorship of the festival, where we gave 500 tickets to hotels, so we're thinking that that might have helped with people booking a hotel room, because they're also getting a free ticket to go to the festival that's right down the way. We do have a Business Impact Survey out today. We now have 12 responses. It's similar to the one I put out last year, but we're asking for a bit more detail. We only got 19 responses last year, so I'm hoping for a better turnout. And you know, this is a flyer, "The avocado margarita festival has grown. Let's talk about it." We need to talk about it. We're getting a lot of feedback from business owners. We want to make sure that this is a benefit for the entire town, for our businesses to increase their revenue on that day. So we are inviting business owners from everywhere to come on down on Wednesday, in the morning or in the evening, to Belavino Wine Bar at Distazio's. We're holding meetings from 8:30 to 9:30, 5:30 to 6:30. The agenda will focus on layout first, so we're going to talk to the Embarcadero business owners who were experiencing this festival for the first time, because we were in additional block. And then we're going to talk about things like parking, and things that everybody in the city kind of feels that day. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, Erica. Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it. And congratulations on two years. Glad to have you. And with that, next, we have Rideshare Week.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Irons, council members, and the community members of Morro Bay. My name's Sarah Trauger. I'm from the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. I'm the rideshare program coordinator. Rideshare is a division of Slocog that is focused on transportation demand management, so getting single occupancy vehicles off the road. One of our major events is called Rideshare Week, and it's a week that we hope that you guys will get out of your cars, so hopefully you'll try something new. So I'm here to talk about that, about Walk to School Day, which also happens to be during Rideshare Week, and just give a little plug to our RTP survey, which my coworker, John, will be presenting on just next. So this is our, you might recognize this from last year, we're having a very similar or the same poster and promotion of the week. So the week is October 2 through 6, and we just hope that you guys will try to walk, bike, bus, carpool, or vanpool to work, and you can pledge that you'll do so at supercommuter.org. So to help you out with that, you can pledge to make a smart commute choice, and the city of Slow has free transit all week, and Morro Bay Transit has Try Transit Free Thursday. Try to say that five times fast. And then for employers throughout Slow County, there's food giveaways, individualized commute expertise, so if you don't know how you're possibly going to not drive your single car to your single job, we can help you find a friend, get you the best bus route for yourself, whatever we can do to help you. We will do. And then you can also get a free vehicle upgrade from Enterprise Rideshare, so if you wanted to start a vanpool, we could help you with that as well. So in case you didn't know, three out of four commuters drive alone to work. If you were to share a ride, you might save money, improve your health, and be green. We also can have employers pledge to make a smart commute, or to just, you know, help their employees make smart commutes. So we have those wonderful posters that you saw at the beginning. We have big banners that are much taller than myself, provided by Slocog to have your employees sign that they will, you know, walk, bike, or rideshare to work. And if you get 10 employees to pledge, you might get a prize from my coworker, Peter. And then onward. There are 18 events throughout Slow County for Rideshare Week, and the closest one to Morro Bay happens to be at the California Men's Colony. On Thursday, September 28, Peter should be there with pizza and getting you to sign up to make a smart commute during the week of Rideshare Week. And there's a challenge. So if you are Rideshare members, or a part of our Back and Fourth Club, and you are logging your rides, you can help your workplace win a Best Workplaces for Commuters award, and that's just a national ranking, and you'll get promoted. Your employer will be promoted for that. And then my very favorite promotion is Walk to School Day, and that day happens to be October 4 this year. And so this seat says 29 schools are participating. That was earlier stats. I'm up to 34 schools participating. And usually, I have Delmar participating. I have never gotten Morro Bay High School to participate, but it sounds like the previous speaker has a contact there that I need to get in touch with. Schools receive stickers, pencils, posters, and banners, and they can apply for sponsorship of $200 to $600 to promote students to walk and bike to school, and anything that will make them walk and bike to school that's school-appropriate. And then lastly, I'll just give a brief Take Our RTP spiel. The survey's available, and I will let John speak to that next. Thanks so much, guys. Do you guys have any questions, or anybody in the audience?
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you. And are there flyers and stuff in the back?
There are RTP flyers in the back. As for anything you'd like to know about Rideshare Week, check out rideshare.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, that concludes our presentations for tonight. Next on the agenda, we'll start off with public comment. I have two speaker slips with no, so Steve Stevens and Paula Radke. Are you guys public comment? There's no agenda item, so I just need to know. Paula, are you just general public comment?
(inaudible).
Or is there an agenda item?
(inaudible).
Item C1?
(inaudible).
Okay.
But I'd like to do public comment. I can't stay.
Okay. All right, that's what I need to know. And then the other one, Steve Stevens. I don't know what you want to speak to. What agenda item?
(inaudible).
Just public comment? Those are the only two I have. And starting off, public comment, we do a business spot, and we're going to invite Leslie Rugerbret from The Good Flea to come up. Introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about The Good Flea, and start us off with the public comment. Thanks, Leslie.
Okay. Thank you, council, and mayor, and staff, for letting me come up here tonight. My name is Leslie Rugerbret, and I own The Good Flea at 335 Quintana. If you haven't been there, it's right next to Colligan. Easy to find me, always have furniture outside. I'm open, it feels like eight days a week, but seven days a week, 10 to 5:30, and 4:00 on Sundays. And I'm just getting ready to celebrate my five-year anniversary there on October 1st. So I thank the community for supporting me and letting me do something I love to do in the place I love to live. So, and I do want to say that I do help three nonprofits, the Dog Park, and the Bike Park, and Meads Dog Rescue in Templeton. So sometimes they get donations, and they have nowhere to sell them. I'll sell them for them and give them the money. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, Leslie, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And then next, so we've got about 40 minutes worth of speaker slips and public comment, and then I've got items for, speaker slips for B3 and B4. And so we'll start off with public comment, and with that, we'll start off with Naseen Ruani. I hope I pronounced that right. And then John Dunanzio.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Naseem Rahani, and I'm a health educator with the Tobacco Control Program for the County of San Luis Obispo Public Health Department. I am so pleased to be here tonight. For both myself and our team, would like to show our support and commitment to the important measures that are being taken in Morro Bay in regard to tobacco use and marijuana. While the County of San Luis Obispo was a pioneer when it came to the implementation of a smoking ban, we still find ourselves falling short when it comes to protecting the health of our citizens. We would like to support the- We would like to support the council's recommendation to maintain current strict prohibitions, and would like to assist in reconsidering some of the exemptions that currently exist in the ordinance that we have. In addition, our existing secondhand smoke ordinance that was passed in 2012, although a great accomplishment, does still fall short when it comes to including e-cigarettes and marijuana. Furthermore, in the American Lung Association's 2016 State of Tobacco Control Report, Morro Bay unfortunately earned a grade of D ranking for overall tobacco control. We are positive and certain that by working together, we can improve this grade drastically. As with all types of tobacco, including the e-juice present in e-cigarettes, the denominator is nicotine. Nicotine is a very powerful drug, which is harmful, and remains the reason why people keep turning to tobacco products. Furthermore, contrary to popular belief, e-cigarettes are not entirely harmless. We also believe that the public use of cannabis should be included in our secondhand smoke ordinance, since secondhand cannabis smoke contains THC, which is harmful to both non-smokers and children. We have made great strides in our county, and just this past February, we assisted Paso Robles in passing a new comprehensive tobacco ordinance. With the passing of Prop 64, the time is right for us to work hand in hand in ensuring that all parties involved not only have their rights protected, but also their health and well-being. We look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Dunanzio, and then Glenn Silaway.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and Morro Bay City Council. I'm John Dunanzio. I'm a regional transportation planner for San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. Slocog is a local governments association in San Luis Obispo County region, whose members include all seven cities, as well as the unincorporated areas of San Luis Obispo County. The central purpose of our, our agency is to examine common regional transportation problems, common problems, and suggest solutions. And Slocog provides transportation planning and funding for the region, and serves as a forum for study and resolution to regional, regional issues. So, we're, we're embarking, as we do every four or five years, to update what we call the RTP, or Regional Transportation Plan. It's not unlike the long-range transportation plans that the city does, but it's for the whole region. One of the differences is that in order for a city or a region to receive state or federal funding, the projects have to be in the RTP. So, we're really just kicking this off. It will take, we'll be working on this probably for the next year, year and a half, but this initial survey, and I know you've heard of lots of surveys tonight already, but it's very important just to hear, to make your contributions heard, whether it's you travel on Highway 1, the 41, or US 101 throughout our region, to hear those transportation needs. The website is www.slocog.org. You could also go to slocog.org/2019rtp to fill in the survey. There are, in the back, there are little T-coasters that have that URL, and again, that's slocog.org. And one more little point, we were working with your Department of Public Works to install this week a bicycle counter for the Morro Creek Bridge, and that bicycle counter will be counting pedestrians and bicycles for the next few months. It's a mobile counter, so we can put it down and pick it up, but probably for the next three or four months, we'll have it out there, collecting information and having data contributing to the national bicycle database. So, thanks to Rob Leivik and his staff for processing that, and we'll get those counts out to you soon. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Glenn Silaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. My name is Glenn Silaway. I live in Morro Bay. Tonight, I wanted to come and just announce to you that the Cerito Peak Conservation Effort that we've discussed before, based on your purchase of Cerito Peak, or the parcel at the top of it, is going to have a kickoff event this coming Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00. It's a community block party. It's going to be on Cerito Place, which is a little tiny street that runs between Olive and Shasta and South Morro Bay at the foot of Cerito Peak. We're going to have a lot of fun. There's going to be tables, and docents, and music, and food, and a lot of information about the peak and why we should preserve it. Now, it's a little ironic that we have to invite a lot of people out to a place that we hope is used lightly in the future, because we don't have plans to build any freeways, restrooms, parking lots, nothing like that. We want to preserve it as open space. That's our long-term goal. We're going to have a short program at 2:30 to inform people about what's going on, and we're pleased to say that Dr. Heading is going to join us as the emcee for that event. We have some other speakers, and there will be a blessing from some of our local tribal members. It is a registered sacred place to the Salina Tribe, and we want to, in the long run, respect it for that and for the nature it represents. So, thank you for supporting this project, and I hope you show up on Saturday and have some fun with us. Thanks.
Thanks, Glenn. And before we go on to the next speaker, I have two speaker slips for items B3 and B4 from Cynthia Hawley. I'm assuming that's actually C3 and C4. Where's Cynthia? Is that, is that for item C3 and C4?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. All right. And then, next speaker is Bill Martoni.
Good afternoon or evening, Bill Martoni, Morro Bay. The reason I'm speaking tonight is, has to do with the cost or the projected cost of the forced main of the wastewater treatment plant that's being proposed, and with the cost proposal, and I've heard the projections are up to $40 million just for the delivery system out to where, you know, the current plant, the proposed plant is going. I'm a little taken back by it, because originally, when the forced mains were being projected out to the Men's Colony when we were going to do that wastewater treatment plant, it was approximately $1 million a mile. Those have already always been the quotes, and I was thinking your quote was anywhere from about, you know, $2 to $5 million with the pumps and all that. This quote of $40 million to me doesn't make sense, and I know it's driving the plant possibly to, back to almost its original location. People are looking at the cement plant. The reason I bring up the cost is I went through about, oh, four to five hurricanes. I used to live in Florida, and I know what tsunamis and water, you know, as far as the water intake and building west of Highway 1. I don't think, if there's other options, I don't think it's the best location, especially across from the high school. That was part of the original reason to move it. To give you an example on costs, they just built three miles of highway up by Piedras Blancas. I think they built two or three bridges. It's 24-foot, you know, state highway, and it came in at $19 million. So, I don't know how you can do a pipeline underground for two miles or whatever the distance is and have a $40 million price tag. So, if the price tag of the forced main is driving a different location, I'm not saying the current location is the perfect one, but I don't think the forced main should drive the location of a wastewater treatment plant, because I think the projections of $40 million are just totally ridiculous. You know, it's like I can sell you a bridge in New York for probably cheaper. But the other thing I wanted to bring up is to put into perspective, and this has to do with the offshore wind energy. I'm all for it, but the size of the windmills, they're talking 600 feet with the blades. Morro Rock, it would be taller than Morro Rock, be taller than the smokestacks. So, if you're talking about the impact on the offshore and that, you have to take into consideration how tall 600 feet with the blades are. You can see Morro Rock from 10 miles out to sea, and just to put that part into perspective. So, with those two in mind, I'm not saying not to go offshore energy, but you might consider if someone's proposing it, to scale down the size where it's not so impactful, where you can see it 10 miles out. And then, lastly, getting back to the wastewater treatment plant, another really good option would be as far as reconsidering Toro Creek, somehow piggybacking their forced main from Highway 1 in, doing something next to him. I think it would be, location-wise, would be much more sensible as far as tsunamis and that. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. And then, Tim Crowley.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Hawley, and I'm speaking on behalf of Save the Park. In response to the September 7th Bay News article on Cerito Peak, Save the Park offers the following corrections in relation to the lawsuit filed by Save the Park and the Xerxes Society against the city for its approval of the permits to develop Cerito Peak. The statements that the, that Save the Park's claim, quote, "was thrown out by Judge Jack Crawford," unquote, and that Judge, and that, quote, "Judge Crawford did not throw out the city's approval of the project," both are false. Save the Park and the Xerxes Society won this lawsuit, and Judge Crawford issued a writ of mandate ordering the city to rescind its permits. In addition, the statement that Cerito Peak, quote, "was saved by, from development by the city of Morro Bay" is also not true. Recall that the city council approved two development permits for the Cerito Peak project in the face of overwhelming public opposition and the fact that permits even included a gift to the developer of the, developer of public open space surrounding the site for an enclosed front yard. The city approved the project despite serious safety issues, including the threat of erosion and falling boulders on lower residences and environmental harms that were overlooked. The city also unnecessarily spent public funds on a Los Angeles law firm to defend the permit approval so the site could be developed, even though the project was approved on the condition that the developer would defend the permits in case of a lawsuit. At the time, the city didn't know that those costs could be reimbursed by a reduced price tag for the property. Then, after the city lost the lawsuit, the former city council disobeyed the court's order and refused to rescind the permit approvals. And even though the city paid its LA attorney to convince two judges not to enforce the order, the writ of mandate and the order still stand. Save the Park is grateful for this, that Cerito Peak is on the track to preservation, and hopes that, and Save the Park hopes that the city, now the owner of Cerito Peak, will genuinely commit to saving Cerito Peak from development by rescinding the permits for development of it and by changing the zoning of Cerito Peak to open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Crowley, and then Carrigan Mayon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Along the same subject and reiterate what Glenn just said, I want to tell everyone that this Saturday, September 16th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., everyone in this room, everyone out there watching on TV, everyone in this town is invited to community party at Cerito Peak. The city recently bought the lot at the top of the peak, and the Morro Bay Open Space Society is throwing a party celebrating the purchase and the opportunity it gives us to preserve this peak for posterity. It's a sort of meet-your-peak party, because if you live in Morro Bay, now Cerito Peak is your peak. It's a quiet place in a quiet neighborhood where you can watch birds and butterflies and boats, and monarchs have been known to cluster on the eucalyptus trees surrounding the peak, and I've seen red-tailed hawks nesting there too, which might be one of the reasons why it's also known as Eagle Rock. And at the top of Cerito Peak is rock, solid rock, the same kind of rock you see on Black Hill and Morro Rock. But Cerito is only half as tall as Morro Rock, which isn't quite tall enough to qualify it as one of the Seven Sisters, but it's tall enough to give it some fantastic views of Morro Bay. And at the very top, there are a couple of naturally formed seats that are perfect places to read while listening to the wind, the surf, and seals. But they're only perfect for about five minutes or so, because they're made of solid rock. But five minutes is long enough to read a poem, or a psalm, or to do nothing at all. Now, the easiest way to find Cerito Peak is to drive up Napa Avenue to where it ends at Olive Street, and that'll be Cerito Peak right in front of you. The party is going to be on Cerito Place, which will be closed for the event. There'll be live music, family-friendly food, bugs, snake and butterfly experts, displays, and much more. There are flyers in the back, and, well, flyer right there, with more details, and I hope that I see all of you there as we kick off this campaign to save Cerito Peak for everyone and forever. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Carrigan Mayon, and then John Elliott.
Well, Carrigan Mayon, Morro Bay resident, and I don't know about you guys, but I have had a criminally insane day. That fell, fell flat, didn't it? I, there you go, kid. I, with all due respect, I meant no disrespect or offense by using two words two weeks ago that were in fact taken out of context, but that's neither here nor there. I'm fine with it. It's been a long time since I've been called out, but again, we're okay. I, I really want to look at the, the Cayucus, as Bill was saying, I'm following up on that, and I'm kind of here on Tom Ross' behalf. I met with Robert Enns and the Raccoons the other morning with Steve Stevens and Bart, whose last name I can't recall. This seems like the path of least resistance. We don't have to do anything for a year. We're not getting involved with their financing. We, we go ahead and expand, and I know, you know, Tom introduced that very well-written, carefully, whatever you call what he gave you, the five pages, that this is very doable. It is not, and it's the least invasive, and I think it will be the cheapest. I would personally like very much to meet with each and every one of you about this, because I, I think we can make this work, and I, I think it should be taken very seriously. They took it so far as to say, this might be somewhat off the record, but it, it would be entertained that they would actually do the work. When we come in to expand, they would take it and run with it, and we would pay for what our, our portion was. As far as the reclamation aspect to things, we don't have anywhere to put the water once we find or get to that place. They have a direct link to Whale Rock, and we could make a side deal with them, with what portion of the water, when we get to the reclamation end of things, would be ours. I think it's, I think it's really important that we look at that. Steve's going to speak to some other things regarding, you know, the expenses and how we're spending money, and I think, I think we just have to really look at these budgets and, and stop spending all this money. And Tom's going to be mad at me if I don't. I'm out. Okay. I think it's time that Nunley and, and the other dude, I think, I think it's time to kind of say goodbye to that. We've spent enough money with them.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name's John Elliott. I'm here representing the 2017 Morro Bay Halloween Trick or Treat Committee. Morro Bay's Halloween Trick or Treat event will have a new attraction this year, a haunted house at the police station to thrill the children of Morro Bay. The fourth annual Morro Bay Trick or Treat event will be held on Halloween, Tuesday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. Families and kids, grades K through 8 and younger, are invited on Halloween to pick up a map at 3:00 p.m. at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt Courtyard, 307 Main Street at Morro Bay Boulevard, and follow the map to businesses to get treats. Register for the costume contest, which will be judged by the Morro will be judged by the Morro Bay High School cheerleaders, check in between 3:15 and 4:15 at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt. Meet back at Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street at 5:00 p.m. for a walking parade and the costume contest awards ceremony. A block party on Morro Bay Boulevard between Main Street and Marcus Street will feature games, a trunk-or-treat, and more. This is a City of Morro Bay and Chamber of Commerce-supported event. Special thanks in advance to all the participating businesses this year. There will be a contest for the best decorated business again. The deadline for businesses to sign up to be included on the map is October 20th this year. If you're a business outside of the map area in North Morro Bay, Quintana, or a home-based business, bring a table to the closed-off section of Morro Bay Boulevard for the block party to hand out a treat to the kids. For more information and to be included on the map, please email info@morrochamber.org. If you or your business can donate a prize for the costume contest, you can also email info@morrochamber.org or drop it off at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Looking forward. That's a fun event. Paula Radke, public comment for Item C1. And then Steve Stevens.
Hello. I'm Paula Radke, representing Morro Bay Action Team tonight. I'm sure it's an honor for you all to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Morro Bay. I believe Item C1 violates those rights of the citizens of Morro Bay to enjoy a full night's sleep. No one is against street sweeping, but street sweeping should not be done before 7:00 for at least three reasons. Number one, Morro Bay's commercial areas are mixed-use, many with residential tucked in right next door or in the same building. Number two, commercial areas include hotels, and those people pay to get a good night's sleep. Three, I believe it's a violation of Morro Bay's own municipal code. Fourth, I said there'd be three, but this is just a simple thing to do to support the health and welfare of the Morro Bay residents. You know, give us something. I've repeatedly seen the sweeper go down the center of the street, turn around, and go back the other way down the center of the street, and completely miss the dirt and debris along the curbs. This city should do what others have done, and that is post signs and prohibit parking in the areas that are scheduled for sweeping. We need revenue. Think of all the parking tickets. If this could be put into action, we would not only have clean streets, but peace before dawn in Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Steve Stevens.
Hi, this is Steve Stevens, and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. First of all, I wanted to thank the mayor for taking the time to call me back. I appreciate that. I think, actually, feedback is very, very important. I voted for you, all of you, expecting truthfulness and transparency. It seems the call for accountability, though, is falling on deaf ears. I have been supportive of a public ombudsman to monitor the council, keep them informed themselves of their spending habits, like a red warning light going off. I think it is important to keep the public abreast of how money is being spent or overspent. So I think that could be, again, most beneficial, and I don't think anybody can argue for, or against, I should say, transparency and fiscal transparency. Unfortunately, just like the Prop 218 vote, unless you protest, your lack of protest is an affirmation, and it's a yes vote in terms of keeping things exactly as they are, like the $711,000 of tax dollar that was voted by this council when it was publicly stated that the study was not required. And that's what leads to even considering $167 million sewer and monthly water and sewer bill of $250, $350 for many of the ratepayers. I suggest that we need to cut off money to outside consultants, and we need to look in-house. We need to take advantage of the wealth of talent within our city, retired, semi-retired, and active, including a very able staff that I think needs to be uncuffed in terms of their talents. I'd support an in-house project manager, buttress by a public ombudsman as a waste-saving and more efficient use of our money. I'd suggest that, and I look forward, actually, to the next meeting that Mr. Heding is going to have, because I am very, very interested in the city attorney. I would love to see us not exceed that $180,000 that we'd be spending and turning it into a blank check. I would imagine that there is an answer to that, and I appreciate hearing that. I don't know how much of our previous Prop 218, $75 million, has been spent, but I'd suggest that this council can, with a straight face, be able to say that they are accountable and transparent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Betty Winholtz.
I want to, my name is Betty Winholtz, and I want to begin my comment acknowledging the passing of Dr. Robert Teft. I met him 20 years ago when I moved in next door. He has been the chair of the Planning Commission at two different times. He was on the airport board for the county. In his profession, he saved babies. He was an emergency doctor with premies. In his life here in Morro Bay, he, on his own initiative, did a tremendous amount of research with regard to our different laws and general plan and LCP documents and issues. And then, once he got on the boards, he did incredible research there, too. He was an incredible mind. But besides an incredible mind, he also had an incredible heart, and he was an excellent neighbor. He rescued and flew on his own money animals to different locations around the United States. He helped out the people in the neighborhood. He tried to do his best to serve the county on the airport committee and preserve the residential area around the airport. I just can't say enough good things about him, and if you did not have a chance to speak to him or give him your goodwill before he passed on Saturday, I think that was an opportunity missed. And I appreciate the fine comments that the Planning Commission made last Tuesday regarding him having to leave the commission because of health reasons. Having said that, the one issue that I'd like to bring to public comment tonight has to do with the right-of-way in front of our homes. And having been on the council back in 2002 to 2010, this was a recurring theme. In my opinion, it continues to be a reoccurring theme. When I reported what I perceived to be an incident in my neighborhood where someone was building and where there should have been street parking, the response was, that's the way it is. So I want to know from this council where you stand on preserving or not preserving public parking in front of our homes. And at this point, I'm not going to care which way you come down, but I want you to come down on that issue so the rest of us know what to expect. Should we be concerned when our neighbor takes up parking, or is that the way you want us to have it, and parking, you know, be done? And that's fine, too. But please make a decision. Let us know so it can be enforced or not enforced, and so we can get along with our neighbors. Thanks.
Thanks, Betty. I have one speaker slip here. It says for Rideshare in Cali is, okay, I'm sorry. Thanks. Come on up. Sorry, I couldn't make my way with this.
Good evening. I apologize. I did not realize I had to fill out the slip, and I didn't have my glasses, so I just kind of scrawled. I'm Camille from Morro Bay Transit, and I'd like to reiterate that during Rideshare Week, Morro Bay Transit will be free on Thursday, October 5th, as part of Rideshare Week. The trolleys will also be participating in the city trick-or-treat. The haunted trolley will be open and passing out treats. I'd also like to mention that the avocado and margarita festival was a huge success for the trolleys. We had a lot of passengers riding all three trolleys, and we also saw an uptick in passengers on our regular little blue-and-white transit bus. I wish everyone could hear the comments that we hear on the trolleys about our wonderful town, how awesome it is. People from all over the world are vacationing here and saying, this is the prettiest place we have ever been. They've been to the Grand Canyon. They've been to Bryce Canyon. They've been everywhere, and they're saying this is their favorite place in the world. I'm grateful that I live in this town. I'm grateful that I get to drive around in this town and see everybody, people waving at the trolleys. I get to ring the bell. I get to get people to school. I get to get people to work. Transit is for everyone, and Morro Bay is the greatest place in the world. Thank you.
Thanks, Camille. And thanks for providing all that safe transportation to everybody. It's pretty important to carry all those lives onboard and be such a safe, responsible driver. Thanks. That concludes our public comment, and Joe, is there any response on the Save the Peak, some of the comments there? Did you want to respond to kind of some of the legalities there or not?
There isn't a simple way to try to respond to the comments. The best thing I think I can do is explain that the city has not done anything that the court has said it shouldn't do, and the issue of the permits that were issued and are sort of on hold, and the court said the action the city took was appropriate to put them on hold. Those permits die their own death on September 18th. So nobody needs to worry about those permits again as of September 18th.
Okay, thanks for that. Anything else, council, as far as response? Red?
Yes. Oh, okay. Mr. Mayen mentioned the opinion piece that Tom Ross wrote for the Bay News, and I read that, and one of the things that struck me was a suggestion by Mr. Ross that we should use a local project manager named Frank Cunningham to take over the project and make it more efficient and cost-effective. And I thought that that was a pretty good suggestion, so I reached out to Tom and asked him to have Mr. Cunningham contact me to let me know what interest he had in that. And Tom wrote back and said that he didn't actually know Mr. Cunningham, that he had heard his name, and that he had been recommended to him. Jeff Heller sent me contact information for Mr. Cunningham. So on the theory that at least one of us should know what he was talking about, I picked up the phone and I called Mr. Cunningham, and I found out that this was Frank Cunningham who used to work for the City of Morro Bay. And I worked with Frank about 10 years ago on some bicycle projects. So I asked Frank if he had any interest in taking over the project and helping us out, and he said he's retired, he has social security limitations, and he has no interest in working on the water reclamation facility. But he did recommend that we should get Cayucus off the system and reduce our outfall to less than a million gallons a day so that we don't need to have a 301 waiver from the Water Quality Board. So the lesson that I take from this is that it's important to check your information. Carrigan and Steve and Bart Beckman are all doing the right thing, along with the members of Citizens for Affordable Living. They're doing their research. But I want to stress that when somebody tells you something, you need to check it out. You can't just take it for face value. And that's something that we're doing here on the council. We are looking at the Toro Creek site, and we call that due diligence, is to investigate what people tell you and find out what's true and what's not. So I just want to pass that on for what it's worth.
Thanks, Red. Matt? John?
I wondered if Mr. Leivik could respond to Mr. Bill Martney's statement regarding the potential costs in the Forest Main, $40 million, way too high, possibly. Rob, I don't know if you want to take--
Sure. $40 million would be way too high for a Forest Main to South Bay Boulevard. I think our latest estimate puts it at about, the lift station in Forest Main, at about $13 million, and then about an additional $7 million to get the water back to, should the city pursue groundwater injection.
Thank you. Marla?
I just want to reiterate that much of this information will be contained in the next report that the city council is going to get, where we're going to look very carefully at five sites, and we're going to address some of these other issues as well, so that we have better information moving forward. So a lot of numbers have been thrown out, but we're trying to get closer and closer to what things will actually cost so we can make a final decision. So that'll be next time.
Okay, thanks. And I'm just going to ask Steve Stevens if he can leave me your email address on some of your questions. As far as the, no, I think the cost about money that was being spent from the 218, we had a staff report last month that was pretty detailed on the finances for that. So that's in that staff report. I can send that to you. And also, I'd ask, you know, visit our city website and our budget, as we discussed on the phone. I think that's a pretty good source. When I think about ombudsman, we approve our budget every year, so whatever's in that budget, as I'm looking at our staff, we're not going to spend over that, and we're going to be having an update on that, a quarterly update, and we'll get an update on where we are on that or where we have to make adjustments based on, you know, revenues and things like that. So we do have checks and balances within approving, adopting, and coming back on what our budget is approved at the beginning of the year and then mid-year budget amendments. So any other comments from council?
Yes, and I would add to that that we also have a Citizens Finance Committee that reviews not only the budget, but also the quarterly reports that come to us. And so you might want to speak with those folks or check out those meetings or attend those meetings. They occur monthly or every other month, depending upon the availability of the individuals. But the Citizens Finance Committee is made up of citizens that are selected to review those kinds of financial considerations for the city as well. So that's another one of those transparency issues that we've raised.
Okay, great. And with that, that concludes our public comment. We'll move on to consent, and I'll open up public comment for consent. I have one speaker slip for consent for A5, and that's Glenn Silaway. And I don't have any speaker slips for any other items on consent.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Glenn Silaway with Morro Bay. This time, I'm talking to you as the president of the Historical Society of Morro Bay, and I'd like to start to address this Franklin Riley Park issue by thanking Councilman Davis for bringing it up. Some time ago, the Historical Society discussed the idea of naming a park after Franklin Riley, who was our European founder. He moved here in 1864 and eventually laid out the downtown that you know today, it's not changed. It's not changed. The layout is the same. The names of the streets are different. But there's a legacy there that goes over 150 years now, and we should recognize it. So, we're asking you to name this park. It's a little area on the bluff just above Tidlin Park. It is, it's an open space, but it's unnamed. It's not very much improved. And we would like to see that change and be used as a nice amenity for the public. We have started raising money already for signage for that park. If you approve it, we may be able to get something done quickly. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. And that concludes our public comment for the consent agenda. And with that, I will ask if there's any items to pull for consent?
A3 and A4.
A5.
A3, A4, and A5. Wow. Anything else?
No, I wanted to pull A5.
Okay, so with that, I'd take a motion to approve items A1 and A2. So, moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mrs. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Item A3.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask Mr. Andrewsby, if you could, for us on item A3, just trying to get a better understanding of the lease assignment. And part of the due diligence, I know that you've gone through, is to vet the assignees and determine their financial acumen, sources of funds for assuming the lease, and also their business acumen with regard to operating the entity that they're taking over. And this is to be consistent, so this is nothing special with regard to this lease assignment. But I have asked this of every assignment that has come through, so that the community and we have a good understanding as a city that we're going to have successful tenants. And so, if you could, and by the way, welcome Mr. and Mrs. Kostecka to the community. Good to have you. And Eric, thanks for taking the time to just briefly give us an overview, if you could.
Sure, no problem, Councilman Heading. Glad to. So, as you stated, like every lease, when it goes to an assignment assumption, there's a process we go through. Excuse me. It's not as extensive as you would in a consent of landowner type situation. We don't look at a business pro forma and ask them to submit all those sorts of materials. But we do look at their basic business background and what their acumen is, as you termed it, and their financial backing. In the Kostecka's case, you know, we solicited material from them, both written statements and financial backing material. They've been looking for about a year to purchase such an opportunity. And while they don't have exact hotel-type ownership experience, they do have ownership or experience in the hospitality industry. Mr. Kostecka worked at a resort down in Fallbrook, starred as a bellman in the late 1980s and worked up and through corporate sales. And they have been in the real estate business for about 29 or 30 years as brokers, licensed real estate brokers and investors. They had a pretty extensive property portfolio, started and ran real estate companies and renovated multiple homes as well. From a financial standpoint, we looked at their investment portfolios. We require them to submit financial statements from banks and whatnot. They did provide those. And they have a substantial investment portfolio, backing from mainstream credit union, and very, both have very high credit scores with no flags that were on their credit reports. I did run all these materials by, through the financial, finance director, which is required for our lease policy, and generally through the leases. And they are financially sound, and we didn't see any reason to withhold consent. So, all those things, put together in total, you know, the city cannot unreasonably withhold consent, and we saw no red flags and saw definite business acumen and history and experience to run a business, operate a business, renovation with homes. That brings in their experience on construction and management and upkeep as well. And they are inheriting, or they're purchasing, a very successful site that, as you know, Ken Scott brought from an old, underperforming landing that served the tugboat industry, transitioned into hotel, retail shop. It's one of the most successful hotels on the waterfront now in terms of occupancy, which is great. And thank Ken Scott for his tenure. We're going to miss him. But the Kosteckas are taking over a profitable and well-run business.
Good. I really appreciate that. And again, as part of due diligence, I think it's important for us to know that and have that background. And so, with that, I would move approval of A3.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Item A4.
Yes, thank you. Item A4, because of the current national epidemic with regard to the opioid crisis and the significant number of deaths that have occurred in the United States, about 65,000 last year due to drug overdose issues, I was wondering, and I spoke earlier to Mr. Andrewsby, regarding the city's drug-free workforce policy that is required in order for this assignment to, or for this contract to be signed. And so, if you could just briefly tell us if the city is compliant with that and give us just a very slight overview. I think it's very important that the city be compliant with that, to be part of, a very small part of this solution for this national epidemic.
Sure, be glad to. As you stated, the grant requirement, the grant requires us to have a drug-free workplace policy and implement it. All of our Department of Boating and Waterways grant contracts, whether they're for this or for equipment, or even the launch ramp project, have this and many other requirements that we comply with various governmental policies and whatnot. On the drug-free workplace policy, yes, the city of Morro Bay does have one. In fact, we just renewed our, approved a new policy back in March of this year. That policy was provided to all part-time and full-time personnel who were required to review it and sign in acknowledgment that they did receive it. And the city goes through, I don't know exactly when the last training in this regard was, but the city does go through regular training on this and many other workplace health and safety type issues. So, yes, we do have the policy in place. We are compliant, and we do have what we need in place for, to be compliant with a DBW contract.
Good, thank you. It's good to be assured that the city is a participant in assuring that we have a drug-free workforce and workplace. And I thank you for that, and I know that that is a requirement for all federal and state contracts. And so, with that, I'll move approval of A4.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Lastly, item A5.
A5 is a recommendation to name a new park after Franklin Riley. I want to thank the Historical Society of Morro Bay, especially Joan Solu and Glenn Silaway, for preparing and making several presentations to the Recreation Parks Commission and bringing it forward to council tonight. And the question that you should be asking is, who was Franklin Riley? And why are we naming a park after him? And I think Glenn answered that question. Franklin Riley moved to this location in 1864, and he built the first European house in this area. He also built a wharf and a warehouse to make Morro Bay a center for commercial activity. He also engaged a friend who was a surveyor to lay out the street grid that we still use today for our downtown. And then the most lasting and most visible thing that he did was to plant eucalyptus trees. The early settlers in Morro Bay could hardly stand it because of the blowing sand. So, Mr. Riley brought in blue gum eucalyptus seedlings and seeds and planted them himself and gave them away to other people to plant. And in fact, at the corner of South and Morro Streets, in the area that we are proposing to name after Franklin Riley, is a eucalyptus tree that is 29 feet in circumference. And a tree that large may well have been one of the trees that Mr. Riley planted. When I did some research to find out how Franklin Riley was being honored in the city of Morro Bay, I only found one place, and that is a photograph that hangs in the library in the Henry P. Humboldt Room. So, if you want to see what he looked like, you can go there and see it. So, to me, this is an action that is warranted and overdue, and I support it.
Yes, and I just want to agree with everything that Red said. I also wanted to pull this and to thank the Historical Society and the Parks and Rec for approving this, and to say that I love looking at all of the historical data that is in our agenda packet. And for those of you who haven't looked, you should, because it's a wonderful history of Morro Bay, right there in our agenda packet. So, I'm going to thank them for doing that.
Thanks, Marla. Anybody else?
I move approval of item A5.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Marla and a second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. We good on everything, Lori? Okay, good. All right, that concludes our consent. And just checking in, if we need to take a little recess before we get started on the next item with anyone? A two-minute? Yep. All right, we'll take a three-minute recess, and we'll be right back. Thanks. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone. Next item on the agenda, first business item, item C1. This is a direction regarding street sweeping and garbage collection noise as related to the city's noise ordinance. This is from our Public Works Director, Rob Leavitt. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item is being brought to you based on a request from council. And the council had received several complaints regarding noise due to either the timing of street sweeping or refuse collection. The City of Morro Bay does either contract for or provide through a franchise agreement for garbage recycling and yard waste for the entire city of Morro Bay. The contract with Morro Bay Garbage states that garbage collection is not to occur between 7:00 PM -- or, excuse me, 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM on any day within 200 feet of residential premises. And commercial garbage does not have a timeframe stated on it, and it's to be collected Monday through Sunday on those same days. The contract with SP Maintenance, who provides our street sweeping, is sweeping is to be done in residential areas between 7:00 AM -- or not before 7:00 AM, and then in the commercial areas, not before 4:00 AM. I provided the complete noise ordinance. And then getting into some of the details, the city does receive occasional complaints, noise complaints regarding street sweeping and garbage collection. As Ms. Radke stated, most of them occur in the commercial residential interface areas where those activities occur, may occur at 7:00 AM or earlier. The actual noise is probably not subject to provisions in the municipal code, based on my reading, that it's neither unusual nor unexpected because both garbage collection and street sweeping are a part of living within an urbanized area. Also, both garbage collection and street sweeping are governed by contract items, so they're subject to approval by the city for the times that they occur. Street sweeping is an activity that is required by our stormwater permit, our NPDS stormwater permit, to keep material from migrating into the bay. Street sweeping typically occurs in the commercial areas early because we have a prohibition from parking between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM in the commercial areas in the downtown. Given these issues and that both street sweeping and refuse recycling collection are required in this urban environment, the timing of these activities is a compromise between conveniences for business activities, the traveling public, and to not cause a major inconvenience. Those timing of those activities are a compromise. Both these activities are governed by contractual agreements with the City of Morro Bay and are subject to change, can be changed through that contract process. We don't recommend, the staff does not recommend any changes at this time due to the frequency of complaints, that it's not a pervasive issue. And look for any recommendations to modifications that council may have, any direction that council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. We'll open for questions from council, and then we'll open up for questions, we have for public comment, and then we'll come back for discussion. So Matt, you want to start us off?
Rob, in terms of, these are annual contracts?
The garbage contract is a long-term contract so that they can amortize their costs. So I think we just gave them another 10 years onto their contract. The street sweeping contract is actually expired and is reverted to a month-to-month contract. So that will be working with putting out a request, a bid solicitation to see if SP Maintenance is the successful low bidder, or if there's another company that would do street sweeping for the City of Morro Bay.
And so with that, since it could be going out to bid or should be here shortly as part of that bid, well, actually, let me back up a bit. In a yearly timeframe, how many complaints do we get, such as we've heard tonight?
I've been working for the city for 10 years now. I believe we received about a half dozen complaints regarding street sweeping. They tend to be in the commercial residential interface areas too, because of the street sweeper being in there early in the morning in that area.
Okay, and I understand, and I don't want to make this such a huge, so when do you foresee this contract with street sweeping coming up in the next month, couple months?
It's the only thing that's kept it from going out on the street up until now is staff resources and other priorities that we have to work on. And we have a month-to-month contract with SP Maintenance, so it's not the highest of priorities for Public Works.
Got it, I understand that. Okay, so with that, understanding the low number of complaints we've had over time, also, when the contract comes up, we will, as council, it will come to us, yes?
Yes, it'll be of an amount that council would have to award that contract.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Matt. Redd? John?
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that. So I was the councilperson to blame for bringing this forward some time ago, and we've had a rather extensive agenda, and so it's finally gotten here, and I thank you for the opportunity to review this. And so, a couple of questions before comments. This noise ordinance that we have here, can you share with me what maybe the city might consider to be an unhealthy decibel level?
We don't have a decibel level limit on, I don't believe, anywhere in our noise ordinance for health. I think it's just, we talk about nuisance, we talked about some activities that are, you can hear from the property line, but I don't have sufficient expertise to know what is a healthy or unhealthy decibel level.
And then, not knowing that parameter, would you have any idea what the decibel level might be for the average garbage truck from the entity that we contract with and/or the average city street sweeper, such as the one that we have? What kind of decibel level?
I have no idea.
Unfair scientific questions, I'm sure. Well, unhealthy levels are, and I knew the answer, and I'll describe them later, but they're usually anywhere above 100. And so it'd be interesting to know what that was. Regarding the commercial areas, in terms of the commercial areas that we service, would you have any idea from a percentage standpoint, how many of them might have, or what percentage of the area might have homes in close proximity? I know that's a tough question, but...
Yeah, I may call a friend here to help me out with that. But I would say, because of the size of our commercial areas, I would say, you know, given that downtown is fairly small, the Embarcadero, you look up the bluff and you see homes fronting on it, I would say a good percentage are in proximal location. I did measure, just out of curiosity, because there's that provision that says the, on commercial areas within 200 feet from a home, typically on the Embarcadero, those homes that overlook the Embarcadero, you measure 200 feet away from those and you're out, somewhere out in the bay. So the entire Embarcadero is within 200 feet of residential buildings. The garbage company does employ GPS technology on their trucks, and the, when we receive a complaint, we get a GPS printout from the garbage company to verify whether it was before or after 7:00 AM. And typically, the complaints that we get, they occur after 7:00 AM.
Ken, I'm just looking at the contract with Morro Bay Garbage Company, and it states to preserve peace and quiet, and then it goes on. Can we define peace and quiet? Or do they have a definition of really what that might mean? What's peace and quiet?
I don't know. I might ask, call another friend over across the way.
From a public health standpoint, you know, what, it may be relative to each of us, but...
I think those are ambiguous terms that I would have a difficult time defining.
One person's peace and quiet may not be someone else's.
Thank you. I figured that. Okay. No further questions, Your Honor.
Marlis?
Well, I did email Rob some questions ahead of time, and one did have to do with the number of complaints that we receive. Just to get back to that for a moment, are more complaints received on the street sweeping side or the garbage side?
Based on the polling of staff, I would say the garbage side. Some of those complaints come to directly to Morro Bay Garbage and bypass the city. And so we contacted our project manager at Morro Bay Garbage. They get a complaint about every three to four months. I checked our citizen engagement module that we have, our Q Alert system. There is one complaint from the last two years relating to noise from street sweeping and confirmed that there was no, street sweepers also employ GPS technology that logs their time and their position, and there was no street sweeper in the area during that complaint. So it wasn't, not to say that there was not noise occurring during that time, it just wasn't the city contracted street sweeper. There has been an occasion where the city has allowed street sweeping and garbage collection to occur earlier than normal hours because of, one, the Harbor Festival getting trucks in and out of there before that event, and then, two, street construction activities where we're trying to get trucks in and out of there before pavement operations occur at first light.
And just getting back to, you mentioned that the garbage company has GPS, so you've gone back and you've tried to verify, were they legally doing this after what the contract said after 7:00, and is that correct?
Yes. So there has been no complaint that we've been able to document that occurred before 7:00 AM. Not to say that 7:00 AM isn't early for some people.
Right. So is it possible for us to modify the contract, either one of these contracts? Obviously, we could with the month-to-month if we decided to say no sweeping before 6:00. What would that take to do that? What would we have to do in order to get the streets swept?
That's probably the easier of the two to answer. We would put it in our contractual, our request for bid quotation, that they would base their prices on sweeping at that time period. We would get bids in, and they would comply with the terms of that bid solicitation. The issue that one of the speakers brought up is the issue of parking.
Right.
We are reluctant to prohibit parking, it appears, for certain lengths of time. I viewed the same occurrence where the street sweeper cannot sweep up against the curb because there are too many cars parked on there. That is an ineffective use of that street sweeping. It does pick up a little bit in the middle, but really, most of that debris ends up next to the curb, and that's where we're trying to get it swept up from.
So if we were going to do it, we would have to arrange then for having no parking signs put up during the period of time?
And I think everybody's seen those signs. I mean, I can recall one in the San Fernando Valley that says, "No parking on Wednesdays" between, I think they start very early in the morning, 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM.
And we know how often the garbage is picked up. How often are the street sweepers out?
In the commercial area, we have a requirement to sweep on a weekly basis. In the residential area, it varies a little bit. Where there's curbed areas, it's about once a month. In the non-curbed area, it's once every six months.
Okay, so not that often?
Not that often.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks. I just have a question for Mr. Andersby on this, Eric. I didn't send my questions up ahead of time, but I'm sorry about that. Some of the questions came up about the dredge when we were dredging, and there were some conversations about that. But complaints from the dredge and the noise on that, which wasn't necessarily, it's pretty close to 24/7, it was beyond the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM timeframe. We didn't do any particular data on the decibel for that, for the dredge at that time, did we? But we did receive some complaints, is that correct?
Yes, correct. We did receive some complaints from a couple of business owners and also from a few residents.
But we didn't have any, we don't have any equipment to measure the noise on that?
No, I don't think we ever went out with equipment to try and determine the level.
I guess the other question would be, so in the future, and I'm saying seven years in the future, or has there been any communication with Army Corps of Engineers, kind of a follow-up on the dredge? And this particular one, as an example, I think seven years previously, we actually had an electric dredge instead of a combustion type of dredge machine, so we didn't have to worry about the noise. But is there a way to follow up with the Army Corps of Engineers on bidding and requirements for noise? And then, at some point, if we were to actually measure and then enforce that, realistically, we could shut them, shut a dredge down that exceeded the decibel limits?
Yeah, so we were in constant contact with the Corps during the whole project, and even before the project, as they're working up to it. The problem with this particular contractor was, this project was bid as a small business set aside, meaning the bigger companies couldn't participate, and the bigger companies are typically the ones with larger operations that are either short time spans or have maybe potentially quieter equipment. So, leading up to the contracting, expecting a standard dredging-type operation, we had the conversations with the Corps on potential time-of-day limitations and had decided, determined with the Corps, that we didn't think there would be any problems with the contract as it was let because of typical contractors that have come into the past in our experience, including the smaller one. The company we had seven or eight years ago, back 2010, 2009, 2010, was kind of an in-between company that happened to have an electric dredge because they come up from Santa Barbara, so they were a bit of an anomaly, and they needed to plug into power. So they were, of course, very quiet because it was an electric dredge, but the bidding requirement wasn't for an electric dredge. It just happened to be, that was the company that got the contract. So, not knowing who the company is before bidding happens, it's kind of a little crystal ballish. So, yes, next time around, in five, six, seven years, we'll definitely be having the conversation more closely with the Corps this time, especially if it's a small business set aside, or there's any indication at all that it might be a company that has smaller equipment. Unfortunately, Otten, another company that came, was a very small company with very small equipment, and they had to do everything they could, equipment-wise and engine-wise, just to get the horsepower to push the material as far as they could. It was the smallest company I've ever seen operating here.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Eric. Unless there are any other questions, I'll open for public comment. Lori Lewis, first up, and then Betty Winholz.
Thank you, Mayor, and council and staff. My name is Lori Lewis. I'm a Morro Bay resident, and I'm here to see if our city can adhere to its own noise ordinance regarding street sweeping and trash collecting. I submitted five separate requests of times that the noise ordinance was broken on 5/1914, and I moved here August 2012. I submitted three separate instances of times that the noise ordinance was broken on the spring break week of 4/1017. My family and I are requesting that the appropriate operating hours be stipulated in future contract negotiations. For example, worktimes may begin at 7:00 AM or later per city ordinance. In closing, I'm not asking for anything special, I'm asking for the city to obey our current noise ordinance. In other cities that I've lived in, the noise ordinance generally begin at 8:00 AM. At a city that I worked for personally, in Manhattan Beach, California, the garbage pickup took place, and logically, the trash sweeper followed the garbage. That way, if any garbage were to fall out, it was a logical conclusion that the sweeper would catch it. So in that case, it worked really well. I know it's really unfortunate to have to post signs and that type of thing. In Manhattan Beach, that had to occur because it was a large area. Now, I've been told from the city when I made my first complaint in 2014, that this was all based on contracts in 2014. Now, when I spoke to the city again in 2017, I was told that garbage trucks do not break the noise level, the decibel level. Okay? So these issues are very disconcerting to me, as I live downtown with my in-laws that live next door to us. So if you have indeed conducted these decibel levels, I would like to know, when did you conduct the decibel levels? Where and what were the parameters of the study? Did it take into account the noises, the driving, the compacting of the trucks? Did it also take into consideration the objects such as glass bottles shattering and breaking downtown? Then we had the dredging as well. So downtown, living downtown, it has been very difficult to sleep. And also, the woman who spoke before talked about people that are paying for hotels, wanting to get sleep and paying for it. We are paying taxes, and we would like to get some sleep. And those are the issues I have. I appreciate you listening, and I appreciate your response to all of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Betty Winholz, and then Cynthia Hawley.
I'm Betty Winholz. Just want to say, I really appreciate Ms. Radke's comments earlier and agree with all of them and with what Ms. Lewis has said. Regarding quantity of complaints, I don't know if you know this, but maybe you do from your neighborhoods, if someone is upset about something, they go tell the neighbor, and then the neighbors talk about it, and then one of them will go complain. Or they'll talk about it as a group, and one person goes complain. So the quantity of your complaints does not represent how many people are upset about it. And taking the dredging as an example, when that was running 24/7 earlier this year, and I made those complaints, it wasn't just me, it was my neighborhood who was impacted by that. And may I say, being impacted for six nights with no sleep or little sleep really affects your welfare and your health. And you know that that's like a tool used by torture. You know, you keep, you do sleep deprivation. And I know that I was anxious and that I was more upset, and the tutor under those kinds of conditions really affected my students and my performance. So when people, and I'm not concerned about garbage, 7 o'clock given, I think the issue here for me is the street sweeper. He's noisy, and he needs to follow the same rules as all the other companies, as all the other contractors do. If we want to post signs, have it be from 7:00 to 9:00 downtown AM. You're not going to see any businesses open then. That's a good time to sweep the downtown area, good time to sweep the Embarcadero when the trucks are coming in to do their deliveries, the guy can sweep around them. I think this is very doable. I'm not seeing a reason for an exception. I guess I just do want to say that it is a health issue, it's a welfare issue, and though there may be a half a dozen of us or fewer speaking tonight, I think we represent a lot of the community, and that we would appreciate that consistency in enforcement and in our contracts. And hope that you will take the initiative to change the contract for the sweep sweeper, at the very least. And if you feel uncomfortable doing that, then at least sending it off to P-Web. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Cynthia?
Thank you, Cynthia Hawley. I agree that it should be changed to, not to the 7 o'clock, not before 7:00. And I think that, one of the things is that you've got mixed use. We have mixed use in all the, all the commercial areas of this town. And it doesn't need, so I would think, call it residential. These are residential areas with commercial, instead of calling it commercial with residential. If there's people living there, it needs to be called residential for purposes of letting people sleep. Also, one of the things that really troubles me is that, I guess it's the Regional Water Quality Control Board that requires the street sweeping? Well, if the street sweeper is going down the middle of the street because cars are parked on either side, and all the trash is put to the other side, to the sides, that means that the street sweeper isn't effective... means that the street sweeper isn't effective in protecting the health of the bay, because all that junk can go down into the bay. Where is it going to go? Either by the wind or by rain if, if the street sweeper isn't picking it up. So, it seems to me that, for practical matters, to prevent pollution of the bay, that the, there should be signs posted, and nobody should be able to park down there when the street sweeper's doing their job. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment, and with that, we'll bring it back to Council for discussion. And I'll start to my right. John?
Thank you, Rob, for the overview again. I appreciate that. This is, this is a public health issue. That's what it is. And really, a couple of those that came to the podium talked about, really, the bottom-line issue, and that's interruption of sleep. That's the real, I mean, passing noise for a short period of time when we're awake and alert is usually not a big issue. But when we are asleep and that's interrupted, and you can't get back to sleep, that becomes very difficult. And so, so for me, not knowing what decibel exposures are appropriate, which I do, by the way, and I'm going to give them to you in just a second, but I think you have to know that in order to understand if you're impacting public health. And so, there are charts out there that tell you decibel limits, and how many minutes it takes for interruption of sleep. As an example, a decibel range of 120, exposure to that for about seven seconds will be detrimental to public health, adverse to sleep, et cetera, et cetera. Levels of 127, takes one second. So, anything above 127 for one second, and you're, you know, usually wide awake, for 100 decibels, it's seven minutes. And so, so I think, understanding and knowing what levels our entities are producing, including our dredging noise, our trucks that come through, garbage trucks, as well as the street sweeper, would be important to know. And then, I think also, the point about, you know, the mixture of residential and commercial areas, I mean, they really are, for the most part, in the city residential. It's, I think it's greater than 50% of the city, so it's a significant amount, and I think the times need to be adjusted. And so, I do think it's time to have us review our existing noise ordinance with regard to garbage collection and other impacts, and look for best practices that might maximize the public health. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, I do have a motion to make with regard to that, but I'll listen to other input first.
Okay, great. Thanks. Marla?
I guess I have one more question for Rob. If we were to change the contract with the street sweeper, and suggest that there's, it's a later start time, so let's say 6:00 to 9:00, or 7:00 to 9:00, is that more expensive?
I think if we made provisions where the streets would be accessible through implementation of no parking, I don't think there'd be any difference in costs.
Okay. Yeah. Then I can support what John has had to say. I do think, though, that with the Morro Bay Garbage Company, if we really don't have documented complaints that they are starting before 7:00, and we have a contract with them, that that contract should remain in effect. I think 7:00 is, to 5:00 is reasonable for garbage collection to take place. And I do know that the Morro Bay Garbage Company has had a lot of positive things said about them as well. And I, when I was on PWEB, we had people come and actually praise the garbage company because they, when the garbage can wasn't placed out on the street, they actually went up, stopped the truck, went, got it, and emptied it. So, you have to weigh sort of their overall service levels. So, I am fully supportive of our current contract with Morro Bay Garbage, but I do think we could certainly look at changing the street sweeping contract, especially since it's a month-to-month, and we are going to be letting a contract. And I think Betty Winholz's idea of having PWEB look at this, and they probably would look at the contract, the street sweeping contract, would give folks another opportunity to address this issue. So, that's, I think.
Thanks. Matt?
I'd like to echo exactly what John and Marla's are saying. We can, number one, send it to PWEB to review, or, just like John, I'm ready to make a motion tonight. Street sweeping is the big issue, and so, that's all.
Red?
I agree with my colleagues.
Okay. So, looking for, I guess, the conversation about revisiting the noise ordinance, and I guess the question, Rob, Marla's was asking about the cost, and of course, if we, if we posted parking, so, we haven't talked about how much it's going to cost to post no-parking signs to implement this. There is an effect to do all this, so, you know, I think that's worthwhile asking, so if you can maybe enlighten us about that.
No-parking signs are about 100 bucks a sign for, I don't have a calculation for how many it would take in the downtown. It's not an exorbitant cost, I don't believe, and it's something we could perhaps gang on existing polls, leverage those existing polls to implement that no-parking. At one point in time, there were no-parking signs in the downtown for between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, but they were removed based on direction from a previous council.
Do we have any, do we have information on why? You know, what was, what was that?
The overabundance of regulatory signs.
Okay. Do we still have those signs?
I think they cite the wrong municipal code section. Now, we've changed the, the traffic section since then.
And so...
And it, just, I looked over and saw Jody sitting there, and it reminded me of another thing, there is a cost to enforcement. So, it's not just posting the signs, there is some additional cost, that enforcement cost. And, just let me add one more thing. I may have appeared to be insensitive regarding noise and complaints. I think everybody in this world has heard of a garbage truck too early in the morning, or a street sweeper too early in the morning, including myself, and it is disturbing. Just wanted to add that, that I do understand the issues there. I quickly reviewed our, I copied the noise ordinance verbatim into the staff report, there's no mention on sound levels in there. I don't know if that was purposeful. I know there is an issue with enforcement of sound levels because of the required training and calibration of measuring equipment. A lot of cities don't like to have a numerical performance requirement, and they talk about, you know, excessive to the normal, a reasonable person, and things like that.
And is there any other equipment that, from other municipalities, so the equipment itself, that, technology-wise, they just have quieter equipment? Do you have any feedback on that?
No, street sweepers are noisy. I don't think there's any way to get around it. There's a vacuum sweeper and a brush sweeper, and both of them are loud.
Okay. So, I'm ready for discussion. Thanks, Rob, on where we'd be going on this, and...
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Sure. So, I would move that staff review, go slowly. The noise ordinance, MBMC 9.28, and compare to best practice standards, and bring back recommendations for changes... to maximize public health through appropriate noise control. Good? Oh, you're fast. Period. Submit to PWEB, and after their review, come back to Council for review, comments, and approval.
How'd you do, Lori, on that? Okay. So, discussion. I guess we could expand, we could, thank you.
I'll second that motion for purposes of discussion.
Thanks, Joe. So, we have a motion, and a second motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Thanks, Joe. And discussion. So, we're reviewing the noise ordinance overall. So, I heard conversations about, we're okay on the 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the garbage, for the trash pickup, but it's primarily around the street sweeper. I think it's pertinent to have some guidance in this as well. I just want to, I just want to, that's what I got out of the conversation we're having.
Sure. So, a friendly amendment?
Not that you have to, I just, not that you have to amend it, I just, I just want to understand that that's where we're going with this.
Are you clear, Rob?
What I'm clear on is we're looking at the noise ordinance itself, but as far as street sweeping, there's probably a more expeditious way to deal with that, and that's to issue a contract that doesn't include street sweeping before 7:00 AM. Looking at the whole noise ordinance, there's many more sections in there than, that deal with items that are probably not Public Works-related, that then are Public Works-related, like yelling and music, and mowing your lawn, and...
So, a friendly amendment would be this, review the noise ordinance for best practices and standards, specifically with regards to street sweepers and garbage collection vehicles, and the rest of it. Just adding.
Okay, so we have an amendment. Need a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
So, we have an amendment by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson, as it pertains to street sweepers and trash collection. Okay. Any further discussion? Matt?
In terms of the friendly amendment, I'd like to see, if possible, it seems to me that the big issue here is with the street sweeper and the time. And so, in terms of that, your amendment, in terms of looking at whatever ordinances there may be that are pertaining to this, but also sending to PWEB with that, with PWEB to look at and investigate the hours, the recommended hours per public input for that street sweeping particularly. I think that's the big one here.
And, thank you. I was assuming that that would be part of the review, and I absolutely agree with that, that the time of interruption, as well as the magnitude of the interruption. So, I'm happy to clarify that, that that's my intent. Thanks, Matt.
Okay. The only thing I got out of that, so we're at, we're being, we're narrowing it down, so thanks, because the noise ordinance is pretty, pretty large, and it's good to be specific on where we're focusing. Thanks for that. Once again, I did think, I thought we were focusing on street sweepers, and what was included in the amendment was trash collection, so we got a second on that, and I just, I would support the streets, the street sweeper review, but not necessarily the trash collection. I think we're there, and we kind of had, that's just isolated, but those are just my comments. I'm sure I can live with everything, and unless there's any further comments, I would just go ahead and...
Well, I would agree with you. I mean, I think the concern is with street sweeping, and I think we could just focus on that without delaying this process necessarily. I seconded the motion so we could have discussion. I honestly think we could address this quickly and move on. I'm concerned about delaying it and sending to PWEB, and asking our staff to do best practices research when they're already sort of short-staffed, when we kind of know what we would probably recommend regardless. If it's an issue, we can change it in the contract. We can simply recommend in the next contract that's let for street sweeping that they start later, and post no-parking signs.
It seems to me it's a fairly simple review of two things, just really, looking at street sweepers and garbage collection vehicles, and determining appropriate times and noise levels. If you want to restate it with that, I'm happy to do that.
No, with that, I think we've got the motions clear, and I would just go ahead and proceed with the motion and call the question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a motion that failed, two to three. So, you want to clarify, you want to, so help out on that? Yep?
I'd like to move to change the time of street sweeping in downtown area, downtown area to 7:00 to 9:00 AM, in the downtown area, mixed-use areas and commercial areas.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, any conversation, any discussion?
Friendly amendment in the next street sweeping contract that we let. I'm assuming that we're going to be doing that soon.
Yes.
Well, I think that's understood.
Well, it's going to take some time to implement. I just wanted to clarify that it's, it would be a part of the new contract that we let for street sweeping. That's my amendment.
I don't, I'm not clear.
So, we have a, we have a motion on the floor, and if you, if you want, we can add that, if the motion passes, we can add that?
Right.
Okay. As far as discussion, I'll just make my comments. I don't feel comfortable making arbitrarily change in time. I feel as though we should be doing the review with our Public Works Advisory Board, and we would get a recommendation on that, and to just arbitrarily make a change in time, I won't be supporting the vote. So, if there's any other discussion, I'll just go ahead and call a question. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? No?
No.
So, we have a 3-2. So, I'll just, I know we want to do the right thing here. So, John, I think you had the right motion. If we could just review the noise ordinance as stated, and go through the PWEB as far as reviewing it for the street sweeper, and know that we're going to come back and review the contract, I think if there's, I think we might be able to have a good start there, and then we can move on.
Yeah, that was the amended motion, but I'll restate it. I would move that staff review, the noise ordinance, 9.28.
Specifically to?
Specifically with reference to the street sweeper, present to recommendations to PWEB, and then to City Council for any changes that might improve public health.
So, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion?
Wouldn't mind. One thing, it seems to me, that's coming up in this conver, coming up in this conversation is time. Knowing that we have a month-to-month contract, should we let it ride? It seems to me the concerns are covered there. Review the noise ordinance specifically to street sweepers, present it to PWEB, and then make sure that those, anything found or discovered, not discovered, but placed into it, be put into the next street sweeping contract? I just understood.
I think it'll come back to Council, and then we'll have that. Okay? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks. Any further comments or discussions on this? Okay. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item C2. Thank you. Item C2 is review, report regarding impacts and potential revenue timing of SB1, and provide direction as appropriate. And, Mr. Leibig, thanks, Rob.
Hopefully, this one's a little easier. We don't have a lot of control over this item. This is, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We're here to discuss SB1, and what kind of dollars we can expect that would improve our paving program. So, SB1 was a bill that was passed by the state legislature, signed by the governor in this April. It, this first year, 1718, is a partial year implementation. Collection starts, the fees go up in November, the city can expect an additional, about $60,000. Perhaps it's going to be $61,000. It's, these are estimates from the... It's, these are estimates from the state. And then, in the first full year, we anticipate an additional, or a total of $299,642 that would, excuse me, approximately $200,000 in additional revenue. The $299,000 is what we spend out of our general fund for street maintenance, and it's an average of the last five years of maintenance. That's required level that we need to continue to fund. It was the legislature's provision in there to require maintenance of effort as far as street expenditures. They didn't want to see this SB1 money supplant existing expenditures and for that money to go for other purposes. I've attached a very in-depth SLOCog staff report that did much better justice to this report than I did. There is also, excuse me, some additional monies that are, would be available that are competitive programs. There's the Active Transportation Program, about $100 million statewide where the city would be available to apply for, for mainly non-motorized type activities, pedestrian, bicycle improvements, maybe perhaps some streetscaping improvements. That's $100 million over the, for the first year for that program. Solutions for congested corridors, about $250 million that'll be available, and some planning grant money, fairly small pot of $20 million statewide. Given that there's, you know, $39 million, 39 million people in the state of California, and these competitive programs, they try to spread it fairly equitably, and there has to be some cost benefit to that. So, some issue, some areas where the city has fallen down and not been able to receive grant money is based on safety. So, we don't have a large accident problem here where other larger cities might. So, the cost benefit of making safety improvements is not as great as, say, a city in the L.A. metropolitan area where they have a larger amount of accidents and a higher population density. Given that, we will still apply for these, these grant monies and put our best foot forward to achieve those. One project, the 411 Main Street Intersection Improvements would be a candidate for congestion relief there. So, that is one project that is on the SLOCog radar to continue to move forward, and they continue to support us on funding for that project. So, recapping for our general street maintenance, our pavement management, planning work that we do, $60,000 this first year, about $200,000 next year, and we'll see where it goes from there. That money comes in, in our regular gas tax disbursements. So, there will have to be, we'll work with our finance department for a mechanism to segregate that money from the normal amount that comes into the general fund so that we have good tracking on that money. We're a little bit ahead of the curve because the council, through the budget process, approved these estimates of these expenditures in the budget, and we have a list of projects there. And that's one of the accountability features that SB1 has in it, is to have a expenditure plan that is approved by council through a budgeting process. So, we're ahead of the curve that way. We'll be submitting that on time for the October 1 submittal for the state. And with that, happy to answer any questions and receive any direction from council.
Great, Rob. Thanks. We'll look to the left here. Red, you want to start us off on questions? And then, we'll open for public comment, which I don't have any speaker slips for.
When I read through this, I didn't see that you were really asking the council to take any action. You're just telling us what the law says and that you're complying with the law. Is that pretty much correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, thank you.
Matt? John? Tally Ho? Marles?
Well, I already asked, Rob, my questions, and the only thing that I was concerned about was that all of that money was going to go into the pavement management fund, not into the general fund and not covering existing general fund expenditures. And I know that that's part of the law that says, and so, I'm, I'm sure that that won't happen, and so, I'm reassured, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay. Great. And so, in regards to safety and some of the grants you were talking about, I know Caltrans has their, they have a grant coming up in October, and we, and accident safety, things like that. One thing does come to mind, and I think it's been brought up before, is a safety barricade on Highway 1 and North Main Street. Don't know how those types of things qualify with, with any kind of grant funding, but any comment on that?
When we last looked at that with Caltrans, it was a few years ago, there wasn't sufficient accident history to qualify for a crash barrier. The chain-link fence provided the access denial onto the right-of-way, and it didn't meet the threshold for accident on there.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else for questions? Seeing none. I, any, any open, a public comment for this item? I don't have any speaker slips. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. This is a receive and file, no motion necessary. Thanks for the update, and thanks, SLOCog, for providing that as well.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks.
Just one comment. Thank you, Mayor, for sitting on the SLOCog board, and I know you're the vice president and for advocating for the city for our funding. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Thank you, John. Moving on to item C3. Item C3 is adoption of downtown waterfront strategic plan for the general plan and the local coastal program update. And before we get started, can you give us some guidance on how we want to do the presentations and how Mr. Heding and I will step down during discussions, participation on this? And that would be because we'd be able to participate in the waterfront portion of this, but the downtown portion, as I think it's discussed in the staff report, we have conflict of interest because of property that we own within the downtown core. So, I just wanted to see what our game plan was for that.
What I would suggest is that you get your general staff report that Scott will be giving, and then if discussion is going to occur amongst you regarding downtown, that you two council members need to sit down before that discussion happens. And if there's discussion on the waterfront that's going to happen, that can happen with all five of you there, and I would suggest have that discussion first, so then that's done, and then the two of you can leave, and the other two, other three can discuss the downtown. And then, when it comes down to the final vote on whether or not to send this back to Scott to put into the general plan, that I think can be done with a, all of you here with the record indicating that on the downtown part, you two are recusing yourself.
Okay. And so, thanks. And so, to be clear, as far as questions go, can we all sit on the dais during questions regardless of downtown waterfront? Or do you want to just isolate questions and say, okay, questions for waterfront? We all participate? Okay, questions for downtown, and we'll leave and then come back? I just want to be clear.
Yes. If there's even just questions on downtown, you should not be there. So, my suggestion would be split it up. If there's going to be questions and discussion on the waterfront, do that first, and then, if there's going to be questions and discussion in downtown.
And, you know, as a course of procedure, typically, we do all our questions at the front, and then we open for public comment, and then we come back for discussion. So, I was just trying to dissect that. And so, you know, based on that, you're saying questions and, and discussion. I'm kind of looking towards just questions for waterfront, and then we can step down and then do questions for downtown?
You can certainly, you can certainly do that.
All right. Everybody seem okay with that? Thanks. And thanks for bearing with us, Scott. And we're going to look at you and Cindy to give us this presentation. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Irons, members of council. So, you have before you this evening the downtown and waterfront strategic plan. Been a process that's been underway for a little over a year now. So, a little bit of history on this. Back in April, May timeframe of 2016, the council authorized us to move forward with the downtown and waterfront strategic plan as part of the goals and objectives and budgetary process for fiscal year 2016 and '17. We moved forward with that, executed contracts with Michael Baker International, who's the consultant that's updating the city's general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code. This is a standalone document. It's not actually part of the general plan and LCP, although it is, it is an offshoot of that process. So, it is a standalone, it'll be a document that you adopt that is a stand, it is standalone. It will be referenced in some of the documentation that will move forward as part of the general plan and LCP update, though. Okay. So, as far as the process went, we started stakeholder interviews in July of 2016. We followed that with three workshops, one in June, one in October of 2016, and then another, the third, in February of 2017. We moved from there to the general plan advisory committee, where they met and reviewed information on three separate occasions in July of 2016 and in March and April of 2017. We formed that into the finalized or draft document that the planning commission reviewed on May 16th. We took input then, created a sort of final draft for the planning commission to review. They reviewed it on July 18th, and then subsequently recommended approval at the city council of the DWSP. DWSP has five objectives in it. It is, so it's a strategic plan, not a specific plan. So, it's kind of an action item-driven plan. Sometimes strategic plans are zero to five, and sometimes they're zero to about 10. They don't, typically are not much longer than that. Our document is a 10-year, has a 10-year horizon on it. Intent was to better connect the downtown with the waterfront, to create some design guidelines for the city in those areas, and then to identify policies and potential projects that could, that could forward that, that connection of the downtown and waterfront, and then to create an implementation component of it, which is the final chapter in the The document is organized again into four chapters. There's an introduction, which kind of speaks to all of the outreach that we did and what we formed out of that, and then there's also goals that are outlined there. There's the sort of chapter two, which contains the vision plan, sets the design character for those two areas, comes up with some ideas and vision themes. There are identification of 15 opportunity sites, and I'll show you a map of that in a minute. And then, there are 10 catalyst projects that go along with that, and I'll describe each of those here in a minute. The chapter three deals with design guidelines. We have generalized design guidelines that apply citywide, and then specific, then ones that are specific to just the waterfront and the downtown. And then, you have the implementation piece of the document, which is located in chapter four, and is in a table format, which makes it pretty easy to use and pretty easy to plug into any future goals and objective process that we might, we might have. So, as I stated, we have the map that shows the opportunity sites. There are 15 of them. They deal with access along the bayside. They deal with the areas that are, sometimes they're vacant lots or underutilized areas, and then they pick, and then there's, there's catalyst projects that are associated with those, that are potential projects that could go into those, into those locations. So, the catalyst projects, we have catalyst project A, which is a contiguous harbor walk. There are gaps in our bayside lateral access. You're probably all aware of them. And we're, we were originally, as part of this plan, developing a bayside lateral access plan, but we've actually pulled it out and made it separate, and that'll be incorporated into the general plan and LCP update. We're working on that right now. That deals with opportunity site one. We, one of the other catalyst projects was catalyst project B, which is for seafood and local, local goods market. And that, in this idea, and that concept could be located in four separates of the opportunity sites of three, five, seven, and eight. There was a concept for catalyst project site C, which was for family and outdoor entertainment, and those were identified for things like, you know, more out, more entertainment, more sports activities, those types of things in town. And then, they identified for opportunity sites for those, and those are two, three, four, and eight. Catalyst project D talks about mixed use, creative mixed use projects. My idea there was to maybe have projects that might have a maker space in it, or even just vertical mixed use where you have commercial on the ground floor, residential above. Spoke to ecotourism, identified five locations for those, might include things like boat cruises of the, of the bay, maybe incorporates bicycle tours and, and/or maybe tours out to our oyster farms that we have out in the bay, things like that. There's also catalyst project F, which talked about cultural and historical, and maritime museum. Obviously, we have some efforts that are ongoing with regard to those things, and identified several different opportunity sites for those. Catalyst projects G was for full-service hotel meeting facility, then identified five locations where those might take place, one of them being the Market Plaza location that we've talked about previously. Downstand, and then we get to the specific streetscape improvements related to furnishings and things like that. So, we have those for the downtown and for the Embarcadero, with identified, again, opportunity sites where those could be located. And lastly, we have opportunity, or catalyst projects J, which is the boat haul-out facility, and it locates opportunity site five, which is the triangle lots location where we've been looking to place that facility. It moves from catalyst projects on to design guidelines. As I referenced previously, we have generalized design guidelines that would apply to both of these areas, both the waterfront and the downtown, and then there are design guidelines that are specific to both the downtown and the waterfront, and they cover things like outdoor dining areas, signage. The signage component is consistent with the, with the draft sign ordinance that we're working on right now. We've made sure that the, those policies are consistent. Also cover things like connectivity between areas in town, cover parking and loading, and then speak to wayfinding signage and things like that. Here's the map of the downtown and the waterfront. You can see the waterfront in blue and the downtown sort of in the, I don't know what that is, sort of pinkish-red color, maybe. And as I indicated before, chapter four is the implementation piece. It has a nice table. It identifies different kinds of implementation items. It differentiates between the catalyst projects that I just talked about and then action items. Action items are items that came up through the public input process, but they did not relate necessarily to catalyst projects or specific sites. And so, one example of those is establish a local historical preservation program to support preservation of historic structures in the project area, consider installation of informational plaques at historical designated sites. So, again, that's an action item versus a catalyst project, which would be one of the ones I mentioned previously. There are categories that go along with this. They have implementation timeframes for these, for short term, which is, which is zero to three, midterms for a seven, or four to six, long term is seven to 10 years, and then has responsibilities identified for who would be carrying them out and then who would be And lastly, there was a formatting issue in the staff report related to the plan, and that would be found on pages 2.28 through 2.34. It ended up, they had a formatting issue, and they pushed some text down, and it ended up rolling up into the margin. It's kind of an odd situation, but we since fixed that. We handed out an addendum to that. I think we have some at the back of the room, and I think they were passed out to council. And it also, so that affects of the staff report pages, that would be 160 through 166. With that, I will end my presentation, and be happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Great. Thanks for the presentation. And I'll look to my left. Red, you want to start us off with questions? And so, to be clear, we're going to categorize our questions in groups. So, if you have them written down, we'll do waterfront questions now, and then we could do general, general questions that affect both waterfront and downtown, as I would see it. I'm getting ahead and then, and then, once that's done. see it. I'm getting ahead now. And then once that's done, John and I'll leave. We'll recuse ourselves because we have properties in the downtown. And then there are going to be questions for the downtown. And then once that's done, we'll come back up.
And when you as mayor, and you as mayor pro tempore leave, you'll need another person to lead the meeting. And so because last time you had Councilman McWesker do it, because he's got the most tenure, I'm assuming you'll do the same thing.
Thank you for that final one step in the puzzle. And Matt, we're going to, there's no gavel, so we're going to be turning it over to you. And so, Red, thanks. Waterfront questions?
I don't have a waterfront question. I have a general question, so I'll wait.
Okay. Oh, no, you could do, I think we could do waterfront and general questions.
Okay. I love this plan. I especially love Chapter Three. I just think that's so comprehensive and so far seeing. I'm always interested in implementation. How do you see this unfolding? You have a table of actions and catalyst projects, so with responsible parties and kind of general timeframes. Typically, a plan needs an implementing agent. So how do you see that happening?
So some of the things, hence we have the short-term, midterm, and long-term items. And so the idea would be to plug those in through those time, in those timeframes into our goal-setting process. And so that's, our goals and objectives would be, are established and approved by the council. You would be asking, what does the community development department have? And I would bring those things here, and here's a list of things and my suggestions and other items that you could consider. And then one of the, it would be the implementation items that would come out of this is what I would bring forward. We would implement, we would start implementing, once adopted, the design guidelines in the downtown and waterfront, and the generalized design guidelines as well. So if you adopted the document, we would be able to start using those pretty much immediately. So we would be doing that as it related to development in those areas.
That's very elegant. Thank you. Matt?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, for general, and I guess piggybacks with what Red says. So since you guys are engineers and understand this sort of thing, coming from a layperson, how will this document be used?
It would be, you say it would be used to implement some of the plan items that are in here and some of the program items that are in here. It will be used in association with any development that takes place in these locations. So on the waterfront, as lease sites redevelop, we will use these, especially the design guidelines. We'll also be using those in the downtown as well. And when development starts taking place in those locations, we'll be using the design guidelines there. The design guideline portion is not unlike the residential design guidelines that we use citywide. So that would be something that, again, gets implemented relatively soon. And some of these other items, again, are those short-term, midterm, long-term, and would be implemented likely through the goal-setting process.
Okay, I understand that. But coming now from, would the public be accessing these documents when they want to come and propose some sort of development in Marvay? They'd want to come, and this would be separate from the general plan?
It would be separate, but it would be one of our land use, you know, documents that we use and that we point people towards when they're doing development in these locations. It's going to be front and center on the website, just like our zoning code is. And they would be using, this would be another tool that goes along with our zoning code, along with our general plan, along with the local coastal program, that type of thing, to direct, you know, what happens as it relates to development in these locations. Again, this is a strategic plan, not a specific plan. It's an action item plan, and it's something to implement in the relative near term. Yes, it goes out 10 years, but that's kind of how strategic plans work versus specific plans.
That makes wonderful sense. Thank you. And so, my last question in terms of general questions is, what is the lifespan of this strategic plan, understanding that our general plan was so long in being redone, and so, and we're in the process of doing that. So as this economic plan, strategic plan is being developed, what is the lifespan of that?
For the implementation items, it's 10 years. For the design guidelines, I think we would probably continue to use those on into the future until we develop additional ones. Your Planning Commission is excited about this. We don't have commercial design guidelines, other than in association with some of our specific plans, and they're fairly generalized, and there's not a lot of meat to them. There's more in this. And so they take this as a stepping off point into potentially developing commercial design guidelines that don't just apply in, say, the downtown and the waterfront, but also apply on Quintana and North Main. And maybe we end up having another design guideline document that's standalone, kind of like our residential design guidelines, and you'd have one for commercial properties and one for those. And it would just identify what they are per area, and that type of thing. And so your Planning Commission is excited to get these and start using them, and so much so that they're already looking down the road wanting, you know, something similar to the residential design guidelines. So those would be certainly discussions to have with your Planning Commission in the future as to where you might want them to go with that.
Okay. Again, thank you. The clarity is wonderful. And move on to the waterfront question. In terms of this strategic plan, does Measure Q fit into any sort of conceptual part of this?
I mean, Measure Q is...
Measure D, not me.
Measure D, yeah. Measure D, the Measure D area is in here. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have any implementing items related to that. I mean, we have other ongoing processes that we're dealing with with Measure D area right now. You have subcommittees of your HAB and Planning Commission that are meeting to, you know, work out definitions that might be incorporated into the general plan and LCP update process. That is a separate track from this.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate the overview on this. And having seen it a couple of times, I'll just give you some maybe basic questions that I still have. From an implementation standpoint, and I'll try not to be repetitive, I'm trying to understand structurally what partners out there would need to be engaged in order to see this plan begin to come to fruition. Example, Chamber of Commerce, obviously, becomes a very important strategic partner. But what other strategic partners, both countywide and locally, would we need to engage in order to make this happen?
I think engaging historic society and those types of folk for some of these items would be good. Some of the beautification committee folks from the different groups that we have around town would be helpful. I think it's, the item that you have after this is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. It has the formation of groups to carry out some of the economic components of that plan. I think tapping into those would be helpful in carrying out items that are in this plan, and would not be a redundant process because you're already forming those groups, assuming that plan gets adopted. So that's kind of how I see that going, and who would be reaching out to you to help us move forward in this. And again, this plan in the table format in the implementation section talks about who might be engaged in those processes more, and it's kind of more generalized, but that's what it suggests, so.
The lead, when it talks about Initiative Three, the lead for the city of Marvay, is that a staff person, specifically Page 86, Page 352 of 364? Am I ahead? I'm sorry. Oh my gosh, I pulled too many pages ahead.
I think you're maybe in the...
I'm sorry.
I think you might be in the EDSP now.
I just, I didn't get my little, I apologize, went a little bit too far.
You're making Akani upset. He doesn't get to answer his questions.
Yeah, I sure am. Answer that for Akani, won't have to have the presentation. My apologies, I went a little bit too far. Hold on one sec. There we go. Okay. Back a little bit, back a little bit. All right, there we go. So from a reporting standpoint, I know that once we get moving on this and we have the strategic plan, you know, all the action items set forward, the objectives, specific action plans, et cetera, what do you envision as a process for reporting back to council on achieving or not achieving some of the milestones that are set? Is that...
I think it would dovetail, again, you're going to formalize these through our goals and objectives process. I think you're going to be telling me which ones you want me to go do, because the council's the one that prioritizes our work program, right? And so just like our regular goals and objective process, we'd be reporting back to you as it relates to that. If you wanted, you know, more specifics about, well, how's the design guideline portion of the plan, you know, implementation going, then I could report back to that as a separate report item that wouldn't be necessarily associated with goals and objectives, but would speak to that and what your Planning Commission's doing, and how it's using them to review projects, if you, you know, if you wanted something along those lines.
How do you see the HAB being involved and engaged in this process for the waterfront specific plan, our advisory board? What's the integration there? They have a work plan for this year, obviously, that's fairly detailed. How do you see that?
That really works more, the HAB's and their work program, what their items that they're working through, funnels more into some of the, and the current goals and objectives, funnels more into the general plan and LCP update process than it does really in this plan. This plan, it has a lot of items in it that are also economic development related, sort of like the EDSP. And it just talks about things that could go on specific sites. It talks about underutilized sites, and we've got public input about what people might like to see to go there. And so it really speaks to our engagement with the development community as those properties come up for development. One of the things that always happens is when somebody's buying a piece of property, they are looking to buy one, they walk into the city, and they say, well, what would you like to see here? And so then we have to come up with, well, the zoning code allows these uses, but we would have something that's more specific to that. And we'd be able to go, well, and here's some catalyst projects that the city, you know, has vetted through a public outreach process. And these would be ones, not the only ones that you could do, but these would be ones the city's interested in. And we adopted a plan that says that, as opposed to you're sitting down with staff and it's everything that's in the zoning code underneath that zoning classification.
So last question is, Sid, you know, I'm excited that we're finally getting all of these pieces together, including the economic plan, which I was already getting into. But I'm thinking about resources internally in staff. Do you see more engagement of public and/or stakeholders or work groups being involved with this portion of your plan, or is this going to be pretty staff-intensive, and do we have the resources necessary? Or is there consultant support that's necessary ongoing to make this happen?
There may be, we may engage consultants later on down the road. I would say, you know, once we get done, or through, once we get through the general plan and LCP update, there'll be a lot more capacity with your staff, at least in my department. It is a huge undertaking and takes a lot of our time, both mine and Cindy's. And so we're fairly maxed out right now. But as we get down that road, a year from now, we should be kind of wrapping that up and sending it off hopefully to Coastal for certification. Then we will have more time to work on things like the implementation pieces that are in here. And I think we're probably going to be okay from a staff standpoint there. Yeah.
Thank you. Marla?
Okay. I guess I did also send questions and got them answered, so I'm not going to repeat those here. But I'm curious to know, what does it mean if we adopt this plan? Is it, can we not make any more changes to it if this is it?
You can direct changes to it. You can adopt it with changes. You can, we can revisit it. It's your plan. It's the city's plan, and we can update it as we need to. If we see things in it that maybe aren't working, and we need to update those over time, we can certainly do that.
Well, I just personally didn't have time to go through it. And I just noticed sections that I thought the language was bad, and some of it was mushy, and some of it was too general. And, you know, I would like to make specific comments about it before we quote-unquote "adopt" it, and it's, that's it.
Well, certainly if the council wants, we could continue the item to a later date, and we could get those from you and go down that road.
You know, I mean, we could certainly, if we all want to do that. And I know that there have been some public comments made since then, too, that we might want to consider putting in. And I'd be happy to get my comments to you if we could continue it for that purpose only, and it could be on consent.
Really, we're here to get...
Well, I didn't mean to get into discussion. It was really a question of what, what does it mean to say we adopt it tonight?
It would mean that we'd be going out there and starting to use it. But I think if you do have those concerns, we shouldn't, assuming consensus among the council, at least three of you, we shouldn't adopt it tonight. We should, you know, we should get that input from you and then revise the document accordingly, and then bring it back as consent or however we would like to see it.
Yeah. This was the first I have seen it, and I just did not have time to go through it with the kind of fine-tooth comb that I would like to do. So, anyway, that was my main question. I did have questions also about how we were going to use it, and how we would use it moving forward. And I was as concerned also about, you know, the resources that would be necessary to actually complete some of these projects. So I guess that was a question and partly a comment.
Okay.
I don't have any specific waterfront questions.
Okay. I have some questions in regards to the implementation portion on Page 208 of 364. I, you know, I was able to meet with you and talk through some of the questions. And so on F2 on that section, would it be appropriate to say beautification groups instead of, since we don't have a beautification committee? Would that be appropriate?
It would be fine, yeah. I mean, it's...
You know, in the literal sense, I'm thinking, you know, how we interpret things. And to me, that just caught my eye.
This is really meant as a generic, and it's not meant to reflect any of the existing beautification groups that we have in town. So, yeah, certainly, whatever language you'd like to use that. I mean, it's, again, it's meant to be fairly generic.
And that would be as well?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. And then, so in regards to some of the, there was some correspondence received and some requests for some ads in specific languages, and I think it's in the packet. How is that going to be incorporated, or can you, or should it be incorporated?
So we did get, I think, one of the comments was from, I think we did suggest adding in the funding sources, items that would be donated, and that was something that was brought up by correspondence from Peggy Mandeville, city resident, I think former retired Caltrans planner. And I thought that was a good one, and one that we didn't have in there. So suggested that we do that. She was commenting, and I don't know that I said this to all of you, but it's probably worthwhile. If you look at her comments, there's also a bunch of things that look like they're in track changes. That was not her work. That was, her work is the portion that's written in handwriting on those sections in relation to that. She was responding to a document that the Planning Commission was reviewing, I believe. And it was, so that's why you saw track changes when you saw text that was in different colors, is because we'd amended things based on the Planning Commission's comments. And then Ms. Mandeville made comments on top of that, so.
Okay. And so incorporating there your comments on kind of those, just that correspondence that we received, you know, as far as integrating that, or whether or not it's relevant, can you respond to that? I mean, other than the funding part that was...
I think that was the one substantive comment that made a lot of sense. The, I mean, I didn't see that any of the other items really necessarily needed to be. I mean, some of the comments were trying to make things a little more specific when I thought, you know, the concepts were really sort of in general and didn't really want to make them specific. That was sort of where I came down on them. If there's specific, you know, items there that you want to talk about more, certainly we can.
Okay. And then as far as design guidelines, I know you're, I may not, I'm going to, you might be repeating yourself, but in the design guidelines portion of this, fairly general, not necessarily designed guidelines from a policy perspective, but something that the Planning Commission would strive to work towards, specific design guidelines? Is that a fair question or a fair assessment?
It's a really good question, based on commentary that we've gotten from your Planning Commission. So I think it's design guidelines. They're, most of them are relatively general. But items that you can, we don't have them right now. So anytime they're making comments related to commercial projects, it's on their own, it's on them, you know, to come up with them. So this would be, this would be guidance for them to follow as projects came forward in these locations. They were interested in making the next step. You know, they were like, hey, we would like to, you know, make these more formalized and more specific in these areas. And I said, that's good, probably would, but they were wanting to do that ahead of, and without having benefit of the zoning code that we're in the middle of updating. Because some of the issues that the Planning Commission raised were probably going to be dealt with there, meaning like sort of second-floor area ratios, and second floors to bottom floors, and those types of things. And, because those are items that have been brought up through the public process that people are interested in having us address. And so that probably will, would lend itself or get inserted into a document in the future that we do that would be commercial design guidelines for the city, and it would be a standalone, separate, you know, document of policies.
And so, wouldn't, so with this document, thinking through the design guideline part, the waterfront master plan or design guidelines for our waterfront, so wouldn't it be prudent to, and how old is our waterfront master plan?
It's from 97, says Cindy.
Yeah. So... So, we could use this as a tool at some juncture to help incorporate and inform a water, I mean, if there is, if there is an exercise to go through and, and design guidelines, it's almost as though we could utilize this and incorporate it into the waterfront master plan, you know, whether it's an update and/or refining design guidelines for the other portion of this, which is the downtown, which is the portion that the Planning Commission was talking about.
The documents, yeah. The document suggests that, actually. And your general plan and LCP update's also going to suggest an update to the waterfront master plan, probably an expansion of it as well. Because, again, like, as you know, it's outdated and so needs, it needs a little refreshing.
And so then finally, I think the question was asked by Mr. Heading as far as utilizing this and just, and this might be kind of a question and then discussion, but updating the website. So, when we access the website, you know, we're looking at, hey, these are great things, great tools for folks that are maybe looking in Morro Bay to understand, hmm, you know, what is it the city is looking at doing? And so would, is there an opportunity to incorporate some enhancements in the city's website specifically within the community development to highlight some of these new documents?
Absolutely. In fact, I mean, we have a lot of sort of initiatives going on at one time right now, but one of the ideas that, you know, I've been kind of kicking around for a while now is, is coming up with, you know, sectioning off the, our website and so it talks about the different areas that we have in town, because we're starting to do that with our plans. You know, the Economic Development Strategic Plan says, "Here's your economic areas," you know, and then our sign ordinance tells you, "Here's our sign ordinance areas." And we're starting to break the city up into those pieces. And so we probably could frame our website to go along with those. So, if you're in this area, these are the documents that you look at. If you're in this area, these are the documents that you look at. And I think that would be really user-friendly if we went down that road. And so as the, as we move down the road a little further and we get these documents adopted, I think it makes a lot of sense to have our website reflect that.
Okay. So, that concludes the waterfront portion of the questions and general questions. And then Mr. Heading and I can recuse ourselves because the downtown portion of the discussion affects property that we own within the downtown section. And then Mr. Mackiewski will take over. Are there downtown questions, by the way? Do you have ten, do you have a couple? Okay. So, it'd be prudent for us to, okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, just start. Catch me right in the middle. One thing I have, a question I have, Scott, is in terms of the Market Street project, in terms of marrying up of the downtown and the waterfront plans, is that just a fortuitous thing that's going to, that's going to want to be built there and that links those two parts of the city together? Or are you looking, I'm looking at specifically at figure 3.1 in terms of the downtown plan. And with that Market Street project, is there a larger concept to move up Marby Boulevard and bring other things to that part of the, of the city in terms of the downtown?
So, the Market Plaza project is Opportunity Site 7. It does sort of span the downtown and waterfront area. It would provide that connection in that area, but also, you know, based on the conversation that we've had to this point anyway, with, at least I've had with council, would, would put some of the improvements in in relation to the Centennial Stairway area. And so certainly that would be an enhancement to that connection. You know, that's obviously another initiative that we're sort of paralleling. And so this, this document picks that up, as does the Economic Development Strategic Plan also picks that up. That's one of the projects that we're working on and does reference that. So, I guess, yes, it does provide that connection. It will help to provide that connection. It also has, you know, led into the conversation both the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission as it relates to incentivizing and de-incentivizing things that we don't want to see further up the street. Like, we probably don't want, and this conversation's come up several times, doctor's offices with street frontages on Morro Bay Boulevard. Probably want retail storefronts on Morro Bay Boulevard or restaurant storefronts on Morro Bay Boulevard, as opposed to these other things that don't draw you up or down the street. And so those are the conversations that have been happening as it relates to the general plan and LCP update process that have been going on at your GPAC and your Planning Commission.
I guess that's where my question was coming from, knowing that sometimes there's a, you know, it happens that we get just these businesses that perhaps shouldn't be in that particular part of town and knowing how we want to develop that downtown, but then we also want to marry it up with the Embarcadero also.
I would say we're dovetailing all these processes together, paying attention to all of the efforts, planning efforts that we have going on right now. We're not ignoring any of them, we're making sure that the plans are consistent. The good thing here is, this is the same consultants doing the general plan update, so that consistency part is fairly easy. But, but even for plans that aren't being done by that, like the EDSP is done by Chabon, we had them working closely with Michael Baker to make sure that we weren't going off the rails anywhere and we were making consistent policy decisions as it relates to those documents.
Got it. Okay, then I had one more question. In terms of looking at the, in section 3.3, the downtown specific design guidelines, is, are these guidelines meant to create a uniform look or is it more just to create a consistent boundaries of what can be built?
I think it's to, I think it's to encourage the things that we want to see, the development types that we want to see. You see some of the, some of the policies in there talk about window transparency. So, not cluttering up the windows with a bunch of posters or what have you, but being able to see into the businesses. That's that pedestrian connection, you know, so you can see tables in there if it's a restaurant, so you can see merchandise inside the stores. If you're walking by them, it's that type of experience as opposed to having them, you know, covered up. I mean, that's one example. But it's also to improve the streetscape look down there and to have real storefronts look like storefronts. And then maybe to encourage mixed-use development in the areas down there, so we could have some, some more residential in our downtown, so maybe we don't roll up the sidewalks at 5:00 and those types of things. Those are all the, those conversations all have gone on through the public input process, the workshops, the stakeholder interviews, those types of things. And those are the things that people wanted. They're like, "Hey, we need to have more life down here. We want, we have a look that we want to achieve down here," and that's where these design guidelines came from.
Got it. Because I guess that's what makes me think of what we were talking about earlier in terms of street sweeping. If we get more mixed-use there and we have business zone, street sweeping, you know, we're going to have to deal with that down the road, I would think also, if we have more mixed-use.
If we're lucky enough to get more mixed-use and to get more people in our downtown, I think we'll be fortunate. People that, I think, move into downtowns when you have mixed-use areas, those areas are going to be a little noisier sometimes. I think if we, I think we can do like we're doing, we did earlier the direction that the council gave, we can address those issues. We can change the time the street sweeping happens, so people can, can get sleep in the downtown. But generally, you're going to live in the downtown, you're going to have a little more noise anyway. But if we're lucky enough to get it, I think we'll be fortunate to have it.
Okay, got it. That's all my questions. Marlese, did you have any questions?
I guess I'm a little bit curious about the vacant lots. I know there's quite an emphasis in here on we need to do something with the vacant lots and we all agree with that. By any chance, do you know who owns these and what can we do with vacant lots that the city doesn't own? I mean, how do we encourage people to come and the owner to actually, I mean, how do we get new people into town? I don't, I don't, I don't really see anything.
Yeah, that, that part of it isn't necessarily in here. You know, I've had conversations, at least a couple of different times with Connie, on engaging the folks that own these lots. And in, some of the ideas that we've had to this point are engaging them to see if there's, if we can work out deals where we can have some interim uses there. Can we turn one of these vacant lots into a park? Can we have parking on them? You know, can we just have parking on them when we have events? How about that? And, I mean, you know, we'd be willing to pay for it or what have you, but pursuing those types of, those types of ideas. We've had some preliminary conversations with some of the folks that own the lots. I think we need to have a more concerted effort there. And then maybe a broader range of folks doing the reaching out, because it is really a community benefit there, so, yeah.
Right. And I didn't see that specifically mentioned as something that we ought to be doing. And it seems to me that's the only way that that can happen, starting with an inventory of who owns all these vacant lots and the vacant properties and the vacant buildings and...
We have access to all of that.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. And so that finishes our questions. Do we need to open it up for a public comment? We do have a question. And at this time, we'll have public comment. Please come on up.
This is public comment on the downtown part.
This is public comment for the downtown section.
Betty Winholtz, thank you for that clarification. I wasn't sure. I also have some general comments, so are those okay now or are they to be later?
If I may, they're okay, but you may want to have the whole council hear those.
To hear them, okay. So, specifically, page 174 talks about downtown billing height raised to 37 feet. And on top of that, another seven feet could be added. This is the specific kind of information that I would think like Ms. McPherson was referring to, and I don't know if you all picked up on that, but this kind of discussion is in a sense kind of not hidden, but when are you going to talk about that you're actually going to change the total look of the downtown area, which is currently at 30 feet, raising it another 14? So, this to me is a reason not to pass this tonight, but to have further discussion. Another thing, the map that you showed that's the downtown area, the business section, I know that that's what it is right now. It seems to me that you should eliminate the purely residential neighborhoods. Why are they included in the downtown area or in the business section? I would like to see that map changed and would argue for that. I think there's a contradiction on page, both 160 and 174, when it talks about, you know, we need to keep the ambiance of the downtown one and two stories and yet raising it to 37 feet. And then also, back on page 160, talking about again, we need to keep the character and then showing pictures of huge hotels. So, this kind of contradiction kind of says, "Well, I don't see how a developer can relate to that." You know, what is the message that the city's giving to the developer? I'd like to see some more internal consistency. And then a general comment, which I'll just make briefly and then maybe restate later, is how does this, and I appreciate all the questions you have asked because they were my questions, how does this relate to the general plan? How will this be enforced? Are things in here going to be taken and put into the general plan? Or does this somehow it's alongside the general plan, but then does the general plan overrule it? So, and is this really part of the zoning? It's very convoluted to me about how all these things relate. And then I would like to speak later about the Embarcadero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Betty. All right, do we have any other questions for the downtown specific plan? Okay, no problem. Scott, would you want to try to answer these now or would you like to wait for a bit?
Your choice.
Okay. If you would like to, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so there has been conversations about, at your, at the GPAC level and the Planning Commission level of potentially raising heights to accommodate mixed-use development. The idea would be to incentivize those types of things. That conversation has been taking place again at the GPAC meetings and the Planning Commission meetings associated with the general plan and LCP update. This, adopting this document by itself doesn't make that happen. It's not an ordinance. Our ordinance right now controverts that. So, the idea would be if we do go down that road, we'd be looking to implement something along those lines to increase the height in those areas, specifically for projects that do that mixed-use thing. And again, that would be incentives for those types of projects. We're working again on the zoning code update that would probably, where you would push those things out at and what that, what that language would look like. There's been quite a bit of conversation to that end. I don't think the, other than a very small portion of it, the boundaries of the downtown are reflective of areas that are zoned, commercial visitor serving, C1, government, R4, C2. And there's one little tiny area in there that's kind of at Marina and Moro that has an R2, and there's probably three lots that are associated with that that could be changed. But the rest of it's all things where there are commercial businesses found or are zoned where, for commercial uses. Let's see. I'm not sure about the other comment that Ms. Winholtz made. Oh, the, she thankfully wrote her comments down and provided them ahead of time. I appreciate that, thank you. The, there's, oh, talking about the policies that sucks about increasing the height and then having other policies that promote matching the existing buildings' heights that are in the downtown, which are one and two stories. I don't think it's a contradiction, specifically the language does reflect that, but suggests that allowing taller buildings in that area would be okay. Kind of subject to the comments that I was making before about the encouragement or recognizing the encouragement or incentivizing of mixed-use development. And so this document knows that that conversation's been happening and so hence that's where that policy comes from and that's where that discussion comes from. Certainly, the council's not interested in that. We could strike it from here and just have that conversation as it relates to the general plan and LCP and zoning code, but that's where it came from.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, I mean, this actually, I guess we'll bring it back to council and bring the other two in.
Okay, great. So, we did the downtown question-answer?
Yep.
Okay, good. And now we can do the waterfront public comment, question-answer, okay. So, you had the, we're on C3? All right, so you had these guys, so we'll do, open up the comment for... I got that. Three. Okay. On the waterfront. So, we, and we covered all our questions as far as watered down, so we're all done with questions. So, Betty, want to come up for public comment on the waterfront? Thanks. This is fun, huh?
Thank you. Specifically with relationship to the waterfront, my concern is with the bluff development statements and that what's being proposed here conflicts with our current Bluff Top zoning code. I feel like that needs to be paired up so we can see what's going on. I think this is a reason to not pass this tonight, but to revisit it and look at what's being suggested to change here. With regard to the parking, you know, it makes suggestions, but again, there's no real plan there. So, my general feeling about this, this is, you know, a wish list and yet it makes some very specific changes that it wants, like, like the bluff development. It never uses showers, it only uses, like in one place in particular, strongly recommends when there probably should be some showers. It's, it's not a document that I feel is ready to be approved. I know that GPAC has not made a recommendation to you. They reviewed it, but they weren't asked their opinion and therefore you don't have that. I feel like some of the things here are kind of coming in the back door for the general plan when they really should be coming in the front door and these are things that need to be discussed at that point. If this is a supportive document and not part of the general plan, even though the staff report says it is part of the general plan, then it seems to me there needs to be more sync and not discrepancies, like I mentioned a minute ago. And I'm assuming this because it's not part of the general plan, that it's not going to the Coastal Commission? It's just a city document? And I think I'd like to have that clarified, that it's more about possibilities, it's not about musts, and to make sure that things are coordinated. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else for public comment on the waterfront side? Or general, thank you.
Cynthia Holly, my comments are general. I find this very troubling and I agree that it should not be addressed tonight or approved tonight because the staff report and the notice says that it's a plan, strategic plan for the general plan, local coastal program update. And then we hear also that things are going to be plugged into the general plan from this. It's got, this, this is a general plan document and I don't see any difference between it and general plans. and general plans. It's got citing visitor-serving businesses, it's got mixed-use development, citing mixed-use development, and even designs go into general plans. And this is disturbing because the general plan requires a public hearing. And general plan, when you update it and amend it, requires the coastal commission to certify it. A general plan requires internal consistency, and it's against the law to have it inconsistent. And what this looks like to me is an evasion of all those things. However good this document might be in terms of how it can be shaped by everyone to be something that you want it to be, it still is a general plan document. And I don't know how you can just carve it out and say, nope, this is a standalone document, and it's not part of the general plan. And what I was going to tell you tonight, it's because it is a general plan, and it says it's part of the general plan in the staff report, that this has to be, that you can't amend, you can't approve it tonight, because the general plan amendment requires, according to the government code 65358, a public hearing. You've got to have a public hearing to do this, and you've got to have notice 10 days in the newspaper ahead of time. And the whole purpose of that is to get public participation. Da-da. You know, there was, I'm assuming there was no notice, and this isn't a public hearing to notify people that this is a general plan, part of the general plan update. This is a big deal. And I'm interested in knowing how it fits in with the general plan. Betty asked that question too, but it didn't get answered yet. And this is an implementing approach, plan. What we've been told is that it's going to be applied to development. Development, these are standards for development, and they're policies. What that document is, is a policy document, and it's setting policies that the general plan apparently is going to be following. I don't know how it could be any different, otherwise everything would be inconsistent. If it's applied to development, that's part of the general plan. It has to be at a public hearing, it has to go to the coastal commission for certification. I recommend that you consider all that, because otherwise it's not going to be consistent with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Thanks, Erica. Come on up. So this is general questions and waterfront questions?
Yeah, not questions, just a general statement of support, really. Yeah, so I'm Erica, I'm the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber would first like to recognize the incredible work put in by city staff under the leadership of Scott Graham and his planning staff, and would also like to recognize the efforts of businesses and community members who participated in numerous public workshops on this plan throughout 2016. The chamber supports city staff recommendation to adopt the downtown waterfront strategic plan. We feel that this is forward motion in action. It feels like a talking point, and it feels like an invitation for businesses to start getting excited about concept plans in our city. And it feels like a really solid starting point, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Erica. All right, hey, Scott, I'm going to look maybe towards you and Joe to respond to some of the questions. I feel pretty clear that this is not part of the general plan. And I kind of knew that going in, participated in some of the workshops, so I see how that goes. Clearly, you know, I'll let you respond to that.
No, it's not part of the general plan. The general plan and LCP update is a separate process that we're undergoing. This was an offshoot of that to, you know, at one point, we were talking about doing a specific plan in this area. But it seemed more like, given that we were already updating our land use documents through the general plan, LCP update, and zoning code, that we wanted something that we could do that was an action item plan, and that's what a strategic plan is. These are the things that you can go do to carry out the goals that the council set for this, and that was, you know, to better connect our downtown and our waterfront. That's what the document is that's before you. Yes, it was sort of born out of that general plan and LCP update process, but it is not that. That process has been ongoing for a while, and we've had several hearings on it in front of both your general plan advisory committee and your planning commission. And we will be continuing to do that over the next year-plus. Again, separate process. Some of the other items that were brought up were some of the languages in relation should have more showers in it. Well, showers are things you typically will find in your zoning code, you know, things that you have to go do. Strategic plans typically don't have those types of levels because they're not a zoning code.
And so one other question, as far as the general plan update goes. The general plan and LCP, yes, will be adopted by council and certified by the planning, by the coastal commission.
Correct.
And that document will override any, if this document had been sitting on the shelf for four years, approved, and we approved the general plan that had specific language that differed from this, then it goes to our general plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. I mean, ultimately, some of the things that are in here have to be implemented through, like your zoning code, like the height discussion that we talked about, that would have to be implemented through that, through your zoning code. If it doesn't go through there, then this would not apply, at which point you'd probably be seeing me at some point coming back and amending this document to remove those things, because it wouldn't be appropriate to be in there, and it'd be confusing to folks. We don't want to have our documents do that. We want to confuse people, so we'd come back and amending them to make them consistent. You always want to have your land use documents that you have sitting out there, whatever the plans are, your parking management plan, those types of things. This is kind of like that. It's a document that's sort of standalone by itself, and not unlike the document that's after this, is the economic development strategic plan, same concept there.
And to add to that, remembering that the hierarchy of planning land use documents, the general plan's at the top. So the zoning code is going to have to be consistent with the general plan. So whatever changes we make to the zoning code are going to have to be consistent with the general plan. What may be part of the, causing the confusion is some of the language that's in black and white on the staff reports themselves. It says it's for the general plan coastal program update. It's, that's not the general plan. The general plan land use, plan program update is the large, bigger picture of the city's redoing all of its land use entitlement documents. This is one of those, and it has to be consistent with the general plan. So in the end, when we're done with all this review and adoption, staff will make sure they're all consistent, and if they're not consistent, for example, if you were to adopt this now, if it ends up not being consistent, then it's going to get changed to be consistent.
Okay. Not that that should deter us from adopting it, because, I mean, we could say that of any specific document or strategic document, well, if we're developing this in the year 2000, if we update our general plan in 2005, what's going to, what's going to take place? Well, then you, you know, the general plan is the overriding document. If you want to go back and amend this, we can come back and amend it, but that's the way.
And adding to that, if there's something in this strategic plan that's inconsistent with your currently adopted general plan, you're not going to be able to implement it either, because the currently adopted general plan's going to take control.
Yeah, absolutely.
But you have, it's, what came first, the chicken or the egg? You have to start approving things along the path, otherwise you're always being a review process and not taking your first step.
And what kind of feedback? You have planning commission feedback on this? Excitement, support?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, they recommended approval unanimously to the council. I mean, that's, they're hoping that you adopt it. And except much of the input, you know, came into this through your G-PAC and then filtered through them and then up to the planning commission, and then that's where the recommendation comes from. The recommendation does not come from G-PAC. G-PAC is sort of the working group that sort of coalesces the information and gets us to the point where it comes up through your planning commission, through your land use authority for the city, and then comes up to council with the recommendation from them. That's sort of how the process works.
Great, thanks. So open it up for discussion, and so I'll turn to Red to start us off for discussion, and we're going to be focusing on general and waterfront. And then we'll take a pause, and then we'll shift gears and go to the downtown, and John and I'll recuse ourselves. So Red, lead us away.
My only discussion is that I appreciate the process that we've gone through and the result that we've come up with. And I'm satisfied with the plan the way it is. And I'm ready to adopt the plan, but I am also mindful of the respect I have for Marla's and her desire to give it a more thorough review. So that's where I am.
Matt?
I'd like to, yeah, those are some good points. In terms of, I mean, because we have so many irons in the fire, Scott, as you know, and because you work with them constantly every day. And I look forward to the uniformity when we have this plan with a general plan, LCP done, et cetera, et cetera. But I, Red, you got it. I mean, Marla's within terms of your points, I mean, Marla's, would you be, would you like to bring this back for a bit, even with the unanimous recommendation from planning, and go over it a bit more? Or are you willing to? What are you thinking? I can't wait until we get to your opinions. So that's all my...
I'll make some comments. I'm ready for adoption now, and I'm quite frankly, ready to adopt regardless. I think we had our planning commission do it. I'm pleased with the language. Sorry that there might be some views of maybe some language differences, if they can be worked out tonight, perhaps, but if not, I'm ready to make a motion to adopt what we have from the waterfront side. And then, you know, anything else, you know, that would be up to the council. But, you know, frankly, I think that's our job. We're supposed to go through all these documents. The planning commission went through that. I think they've done a lot of work. Staff has done a lot of work. There's no, you know, I think we can wordsmith quite often all these things. And for me, I'm ready to move forward. So those are my comments. John?
I too am ready to move forward. I see the differentiation between general plan, local coastal plan, update, and how this fits in as a strategy. I think we need a framework. I think we need a structure. I, this process began in April of 2016. We have had visioning workshops, we have had community conversations, we have had presentations to the council by the consultant on numerous occasions. I see the linkage to the general plan presentations. And I'm happy that we finally have a structure to the waterfront, and I could still say a structure to the downtown plan, even though I won't comment on it, and the remainder generally. And I also believe that just because there's an action item on here regarding catalyst projects or whatever you want to say, that it doesn't necessarily mean when we adopt this that this is exactly going to happen, because there'll be a lot of approval processes that will come back to us for funding, for input and review, et cetera, of the pieces. And so I'm ready to move forward with a framework. I do very much appreciate the language crafting that needs to happen. I think that can be incorporated in as well. But again, I'd support moving forward as well with this tonight. Thanks.
Marla's?
Well, I don't want to be the lone naysayer in all of this. But I, my preference would be to look at it, and maybe it's my fault, and I should just apologize for not going through it carefully and really making comments on every page. I just didn't have time to do that. So, you know, from my preference, and I've stated it, would be that I would like to do that, but I'm willing to go with the majority, so.
Okay, thanks. Unless there's any other discussion, I'd make a motion to adopt the waterfront portion of the strategic plan as presented by staff.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. And with that, we'll move on to the downtown section, and John and I'll recuse ourselves.
I, so then I guess I'd make the motion that we adopt the general portion side of that as well. So to be fair, thanks, Matt. So we've made, we've made a motion to approve the waterfront portion of the strategic plan, and I'd make a motion that we adopt the general, generalized portion of the waterfront, downtown strategic plan as presented.
Second.
So a motion and a second, and this is pertaining to the general portion of this. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Motion carries for one. We'll step down, and Matt, you've got it for the downtown.
All right, so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the downtown part, a portion of the strategic plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor and opposed, say nay.
No.
Okay, motion carries two to one, thank you.
Actually, councilman, you need three affirmative votes for the council ever taking action, so.
Okay, you're right. Okay. So the motion does not carry, no problem. So with that, so could we move back to discussion, I suppose?
Yes.
So with that in mind, Marla's, Ms. McPherson, in terms of working, going over the plan, do you, could, perhaps we could have some sort of plan to do that?
Well, I hadn't thought about that, to be honest with you. I guess I would have to ask Scott how we would move forward with that.
Well, so I guess if we're just dealing with the downtown portion of it, then the commentary and the items that you would comment on would be those. We would bring those back, show it in an edit format. We'd come back to council, sit with the three of you. You would review what those changes looked like and adopt them or not. That's kind of how that would work. We, you know, they would have to, commissioners, our council members' irons and heading would have to step down again for that process, but that's what it would look like.
Okay, so Scott, so you could...
You turned your mic off, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I did. So we would take the suggestions that Ms. McPherson has made, and not to mention some public comment tonight, and then we bring them back. Do we have, do you have any idea about a date that we could do that?
Well, I think I would have to work with council member McPherson on the comments that she provides and sitting down and working through those with her, and then what that might look like in the form of the plan and the changes, and then bring those back. So it depends on the timeline of when I would get those, but we would be able to turn them, well, now we're running into holiday seasons and things like that to bring things back, so it sort of depends. Well, I think we only have one council meeting in November and one in December, so I'm not going to...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, no problem. And so with that, that we end that item, and then that's it. And so we could have our mayor and council member come back. Okay, cool. All right, thanks. So we're concluded with item C3? Okay, great. And we'll move on to item C4. Item C4 is adoption of the economic development strategic plan. And Eekani, I think you're up in doing this presentation?
All right, thank you, council. The economic development strategic plan, the recommendation is staff recommends council approve and adopt the economic development strategic plan and appoint two council members to a subcommittee for the EDSP. We had a meeting back, a special meeting convened back in April, the 25th of April earlier this year, and there the draft EDSP was presented to council by the consultants, and minor edits were made to the document and recommended by council and staff. EDSP came up because of market changes. Morbay Power Plant closed in 2013. City took financial loss of around $750,000 in license and fees. We have an estimated $100,000, $120,000 in additional property taxes of lost revenues to the city. to the city. Economic impact of job loss alone to the region is estimated 18 to 20 million, with an average annual regional household spending reduction of three to four million from direct and indirect job losses. Economic development alone cannot close the financial gap, but a forward-thinking strategic approach led by public-private champions to create economic activity will incrementally increase economic growth. So what are the next steps? Council, adopt the EDSP. Council appoint a subcommittee of two council members. Chamber and staff work together to create a memorandum of understanding to outline roles and expectations, and for note, the ombudsman position we recommend be selected by the new city manager when he or she comes on board. That's the presentation.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Any questions from council?
I just had one question, which Eekani did answer for me, and that was whether we had any money in this year's fiscal year budget to actually work toward implementation of this plan, and the answer was no. So I just thought, I could ask it for you again, ask it to you again, and you could give it to me again, but the answer was no.
Yeah, that's correct. Marla's?
Okay. John, any questions? Matt, Red? Any more questions? So.
Actually, Jamie, I do have.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Eekani, understanding Marla's, and good point in terms of financial wherewithal. In the timeframe, understanding the new city manager coming on in the next four or five months, what sort of timeframe are you looking at in totality with this?
With the.
This plan.
With the implementation of the plan?
Yes. Or finalizing and implementing, yes.
Yeah. The implementation, this plan will, can take as long as it takes to meet with all the four economic centers throughout the city, and getting their support and approval on certain projects that they recommend. So it can be as quick as those groups want to move. So a lot of it is dictated by getting stakeholder approval from the different regions and economic centers in our city. So it could be anywhere from six months to a year, to a few years of implementation. Got it.
Okay. So without any questions, all over for public comment. Cynthia Hawley? I don't see her in the audience. Then Betty Winholz, and then Erica.
Before I begin, Betty Winholz, before I begin my comment on this, I want to thank Mr. Pomenoni for pointing out that the reason that there was confusion on C3 is because in the document of your agenda, you mentioned how this is related to the general plan, and that it's for the general plan. So thank you for that explanation. With reference to this, I'm just going to read off my concerns. I've sent you a list of them, and I'm just going to make note of it. First of all, in your background regarding the region, this loss with the power plant has been dealt with since 2008, and it's been gradually addressed. So to say that this has been a major, make it sound like it happened in a certain year is not true. It's been a gradual process, and I guess I take some offense of that because our council actually dealt with that and brought us out of the red on that. So I just wanted to make that comment. On page 252, you refer to the wastewater treatment plant at a specific site. I believe at your next meeting, you're going to address that, so that probably needs to be changed. On page 258, you talk about maintaining and enhancing moral-based character, but you do this by destroying our design guidelines, our height limits, and our bluff top rules. So again, here's an inconsistency. On page 267, the only thing I can glean from this is that the way you're going to maintain our character is through signage and sidewalks. And I'm thinking that the character of Mor Bay is more than signs and more than sidewalks. And so this is kind of a weak section to me that needs to be strengthened. Page 304 deals with the elementary school, and I'm wondering if there was some, no research done in terms of what that property is about, whether the school district's even interested in talking to the city, and the nature of that property and how it was acquired. And while there's not a lot of flexibility there, and that that's probably something you need to look into if you aren't aware of it, be glad to help you out. Page 319 talks about workforce recruitment. I don't know how you're going to recruit people if you don't have housing for them, and this is a major issue. I brought it before the planning commission a few weeks ago. We have a housing crisis. Our housing is being turned from rental into vacation rental. And until you can solve that problem and deal with that in relationship to our hotels, bed and breakfasts, I don't know how you're going to have people that you can recruit if you can't house them. And that needs to be addressed before anything. Page 326, I'm not going to go there. Page 332 is a dated paragraph. It needs to be updated. 339, I think what you're asking of staff to do here is very unreasonable. You're asking them to do another third job on top of the main job they already have, and other secondary jobs that they do. So I'm not sure that's a good one. And then I'm unclear on page 359. What does it mean to appoint an ombudsman? Does that mean they're not going to be hired for money? It's a volunteer. It's part-time. I'd like for that to be clarified.
Thanks, Betty. Erica Crawford?
Thank you, Erica Crawford with the Chamber of Commerce. So the chamber has worked closely with city staff and with Chabin Concepts on this economic development roadmap over the last 18 months. In April of this year, chamber members gathered at Three Stacks and Rock Brewing Company for a presentation by Chabin on this roadmap. That was the morning after they presented to council. Members were given an opportunity to direct feedback, or to directly give feedback to Chabin, and that resulted in an executive summary and a 30, 60, 90-day launch plan to accompany this plan. We have the chamber understand that Mor Bay is a unique community, and for that reason, a unique approach to economic development will be the most successful. There are no quick fixes in the city for economic development, and our members are eager for change in the near term. They cannot wait for large catalyst projects that could take five, seven, or 10 years. The Chabin roadmap recognizes the unique position of the city. This is why it recommends such a close collaboration between the private and public sector. Much of the land in Mor Bay is built out with assets owned by private companies and individuals. In order to move forward, these private entities must be brought into the planning process and given a voice in the future of the city. I think this is where future leadership is going to come from, and I think this is an investment in the people power in the city. The chamber supports city staff recommendation to adopt the economic development roadmap. Further, the chamber supports staff recommendation to appoint council members to a subcommittee on the roadmap, and to convene a meeting with that subcommittee and our chamber's economic development committee where we can determine our willingness to work together. Chamber would like to see this group refine a memo of understanding and to bring a draft document back to council in the near term, perhaps as soon as late November. I guess that's Thanksgiving, early November. The memo of understanding is a vital piece to moving this work forward. It's a document between two bodies and not two individuals. It would provide stability to ensure progress with clear roles and clear expectations. A lot of effort and city funding was put into this roadmap, numerous meetings, interviews, listening sessions, and surveys, effort by both city staff and business owners. The chamber would like to meaningfully participate in doing the things we can do now for our members and for the business community at large to ensure that Mor Bay has strong economic centers populated by thriving businesses. Forward motion on this plan is one small step toward achieving that large goal. So thank you.
Thanks, Erica. And with that, I think that concludes our public comment. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll start out with a couple of comments. I do want to recognize that this particular economic development strategic plan, as it's laid out in the staff report, yes, the closure of the power plant was addressed several years ago through good efforts and cost-cutting measures, but cost-cutting measures alone aren't the answer. This is, in a way, to invest and grow economic development and revenues in the city. It's not a one-size-fits-all plan, as I see it, but it is a start for a roadmap. I appreciate the chamber's involvement in all the work, and then the staff's involvement in gathering all the stakeholders together and the work to get us here. We had the presentation that came back to council, that was delivered to council back in April 25, 2017. We had full view of this strategic plan. I think it was unanimously supported at that time. I would move adoption of it tonight. I would, for discussion with council, I'm not in favor of a subcommittee of two council members moving forward at this time. I think we have a lot going on, and the amount of subcommittees that, whether or not it's city council or others, you know, I think at this point, I'm certainly not one, as much as I endorse it, I wouldn't be interested in volunteering at this time to be on the subcommittee. And I just, I think, to Marla's question, you know, do we have funds in the budget for this? Well, of course we don't, because we adopted a budget that didn't necessarily address this, and I think that's, and that's okay. That was part of the budget process that we went through. We're adopting this. I would be in favor of adopting it. Moving forward, when we get our new city manager on board, maybe we can look at what our options are for implementing this. I would like to have seen some options with this. I understand why we're presented with what we have, but for me, I would be more in favor of making, of adopting the strategic plan tonight and bringing this back at a later date with some options. And maybe it can line up with our budget workshop next fiscal year. That may seem like a little bit time delayed for some, but those are my thoughts. We've got a lot on the plate, on our plate. Our staff is working hard. Thank you very much. And this might be one where strategically, we may make a little different step on it. But those are my comments, and I'll look to my left for Red for your comments.
Thank you. I, I'm ready to adopt this plan, and I'm prepared to volunteer to serve on a subcommittee and get started. I, I'm just ready to go.
Okay. I'm also ready to support this.
I'm sorry. Was there a motion? Wait, no second.
I think we're just still in the discussion. We'll get to discussion, and then we can go ahead and go on a motion. Yeah.
No, no. I was just following up. So I too support this. It's my understanding from staff that you needed council approval of this plan before the specific actionable items could be presented. And so if I'm not incorrect, I think that was the intent of tonight coming with this. Plus also, there's no money in the budget to do this. I think it's important, first of all, to recognize the chamber's involvement. I did have a fairly significant conversation with president and CEO of the chamber. I sense that they are very anxious and willing to be participants in this. They're anxious to see an MOU developed, which I think can happen now without any money being expended, but at least it begins to memorialize the relationship between the city and the chamber in terms of responsibilities, and I would support that moving forward. And then if the chamber has resources to begin any approved initiatives, that those could begin in lieu of going through the process of waiting for our budget and approval of dollars to move some of the other major actionable items that will have to happen. And so thank you very much, Erica, for the commitment of the chamber and their involvement in this. So I do support this. I also would like to see some clarity somewhere down the line on how this fits with every other piece of a strategic implementation plan that we're putting together, because somewhere along the line, we're going to have to connect the dots. And I think that will come, as I think the mayor said, with the assistance of a new city manager that will help hopefully vision and strategize on how that all can be focused and brought together. Otherwise, you have a very disparate plan, or plans that are floating around and not connected, and that leads to duplication, I think, of resources expenditures that are excessive and problems down the line. So I'm looking forward to some connectivity with regard to all these plans. So bottom line is, the work's been done. The presentations have been made from the consultant. There was a lot of input given for this framework, and I'm ready to move forward approving that. I also don't feel compelled to volunteer for a subcommittee because of the plate. However, I'm good to go with the will of the remainder, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for your lead in saying I'll be one of two.
Marla's?
Yeah. Well, I certainly support the basic idea that's presented here. I think we really do need to move forward with a public-private partnership. I prefer the term roadmap, which is what it's called, as opposed to a strategic plan. I don't think it's a strategic plan. I think it's a list of a lot of very good ideas, and we need to start. So I'm fully behind approving this roadmap, I would call it, tonight. But in terms of next steps, I think, and I think that having an MOU is a very good idea. I also met with Erica, and we talked about this. But I think that as part of that process, I would need to see exactly what this group would accomplish in the next year. I would want to know what the priorities are, what they're really going to be working on, who's going to be doing what, some milestones, goals for this first year, so that it's very clear what we hope, what we hope to see at the very end of this first year of an MOU agreement. So that, to me, would be a part of perhaps my emotion or moving forward. And I think if Red wants to work on this, we should let him. Maybe it's just a committee of one working.
[laughing]
Right. We don't have to worry about the Brown Act at all. So.
Okay.
All right. That's my comments.
I'd make a motion to adopt the Mor Bay Economic Development Roadmap as presented, and I'll just do it one step at a time. So if there's other parts of this, we can do that. So I'll just leave it as a single motion. Looking for a second on that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. So motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries five oh. And then we're looking for next step motions, and I'll look for some motions for that on where we want to go. I don't have any more motions to offer than that, so I'll look towards any others on council.
I didn't prepare one, but I'll just wing it. I move that we move forward to negotiate an MOU with the Chamber of Commerce, with the condition that as part of that process, there is a specific plan for the first year that would include goals, activities, timelines, and milestones. Did I cover everything?
Second.
So the motion by Ms. McPherson, Councilmember McPherson, and second by Councilmember Heading. Discussion? The only questions I have are, so we're going to, chamber and staff will create an MOU outlined for roles and expectations, and then we'll come back with the MOU based on that discussion? And is there a timeline to that?
I don't.
I guess that's part of my thing. I think that, I think it's ideal to do that when we have a new city manager. So that may be the motion, but I guess that's my hesitancy at this point. Adopting the EDSP, good to go. The next steps, I think, could be tied to when we're ready to do that, and those are my feelings on it. So I would be, I guess, you know, I understand supporting that, but it, to me, it has to be tied line, tied to something more than just that open part of it. So I would be, at this point, not in favor of supporting the motion as crafted.
Maybe I had a comment that it may well be, if I understand, that the MOU is just outlining the specific tasks that the chamber would be involved in completing. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm looking at staff. Eekani, is that correct? The MOU is specifically outlining the duties and responsibilities that the chamber feels they would be responsible for?
Yeah. Correct. To set expectations.
Okay.
For both sides.
If I may, I would suggest you do hold off until the appointment of the city manager. That person weighs in on this plan-to-plan. That's essentially what it is, and maybe bring it back as part of your mid-year budget review.
Well, I have an anxious group that is ready and willing to at least begin to define their roles and responsibilities. their roles and responsibilities and engage businesses and stakeholders that are out there. That's my concern, that if we hold them back and wait six months, that granted, it may not be a complete implementation of the plan, but it may be a subpiece that can be accomplished. That's my opinion, and I'd be in favor of that.
If I may, maybe a way to do that is, if you're going to have a subcommittee, even if it's only a subcommittee of one, the subcommittee member could meet with the chamber to create what he thinks and they think would be an MOU, and then that be brought, not brought before you until you have a new city manager who can then review that, and then that brought to you.
That's a good point, and that at least gets him going, and that, I'm comfortable with that. That's why we hire lawyers to do this stuff. Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, yes. I can amend the motion to say bring it back when we have a new city manager on board.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So I just want to understand for discussion, so we have the motion that's amended to, actually, chamber and staff will create an MOU and outline the roles and expectations, bring back when the new city manager's on board. So the new city manager's not involved in any of the staff interactions in developing the MOU at this point?
I would turn them loose to provide the framework, but not bring it back for approval, have the new city manager review it, make comments, interact, give input, and then.
Okay.
But at least it gets them moving, because I think there are lots of stakeholders out there that are ready to be engaged.
Right, right. And I would just add that it's, there's a specific plan attached to that. It's not just the MOU with roles and responsibilities. It is also a plan for what they would tackle in the first year.
Where are we going?
A work plan, yeah.
And may I add that I think it's important that we have a council representative as part of this group, and that's why I'm volunteering to be a subcommittee of one, and that's fine with me.
Yes. Do I need to amend the motion again?
So we can do the motion and then do another motion afterwards and have the discussion on the subcommittee.
So what is the motion?
My understanding is the motion is, Laurie, do you want to repeat it back or do I need to state it? Okay, all right. So I mean, my understanding is the chamber and staff will create an MOU to outline roles and expectations. It will come back after we have our new city manager on board at mid-year budget, and then we'll review that. That's what I got out of the, that's what I got out of the motion.
Yeah, as long as we add in an action plan, a work plan for the year, not just roles and responsibilities for the MOU. Because I want to see the specifics, and I'm sure that the city manager, new city manager would like to see that also.
Yes. And so the addition, as I understand, so then the work plan is part of those expectations?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
Well, may I repeat back my understanding of the motion?
Yep.
MOU with action plan, including roles and expectations, to be presented to the new city manager to incorporate with the mid-year budget adjustment. Is that...
To be discussed during the, yeah, it's going to be, come back during our mid-year budget review. It's not part of the budget, mid-year budget whatsoever. It's just doing, when we're doing the mid-year budget review, that's the timeline in which we'll bring this back.
Okay.
Just time only.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll do another motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries 4-1. Moving on? Next motion? So that was, that was a 5, that was 4-1.
Who's no?
I was the no. I was the no.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we didn't catch you.
So, oh, you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
I would move that the council appoint, have we appointed formerly Mr. Davis as the council subcommittee of one as a liaison to this working group for the Mor Bay Economic Development Plan in conjunction with the chamber, and that he be involved in said process we just approved.
So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and discussion. There's a motion and a second. Motion, Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson, discussion. My comments on this, once again, I think having a subcommittee of one kind of is in line with some of my comments earlier. I'm not going to be supportive of the motion or agree to the vote. I think if we can't get two council members on a subcommittee, it's telling as well. And those are some of my comments as far as where we're at on this. And I feel strongly, and which is why my previous vote was a no vote on this, is that we should line this up, as I stated earlier, with next year's budget, and we can look at it more holistically with a financial component to how we implement that. I'm not having a lot of confidence in the recommendation to implement this, so I'll be voting no.
If I could add to that, given the recommendation and then the motivation and the energy that people have behind this, I will, I will now volunteer to be on the subcommittee with Mr. Davis. So there'll be two of us.
Okay. Final amendment to include Councilman Makawetzki as a second member of the subcommittee.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
So we have the amendment, motion, Mr. Heading, second. Motion on the amendment, Ms. McPherson. Sorry, did we get all that, Laurie? You're doing great.
Seem like...
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries 4-1. Any other motions on this?
No.
Okay, we're all done with that? Okay. So item, item seat four is complete. Thanks for all the work, for all that. Erica, thanks for coming. Betty, thanks for coming. And moving on to future agenda items, last agenda item on there. Any future agenda items?
Just, I'm sorry, are you going this way or this way? I just wondered, we had the young lady from the Smoking Coalition indicate that there were some holes in our ordinance for smoking with regard to e-cigarettes or vapes, as we call it, or you call it, or somebody calls it. I'm wondering if we should take a look at that, because potentially a significant public health issue if that's not included. And I don't know if that's just initially a staff review to look at the inclusion of that. I wasn't quite clear, because she didn't specifically say what she was referring to other than there were holes in our existing ordinance.
The Marijuana Subcommittee looked at that issue, and the recommendation we made was to include it in the, in the smoking. Yes.
Yep. So maybe she didn't know that then.
And marijuana as well, so that it would apply to, yeah.
Then I'm good.
Okay, good. If we don't have any future agenda items, our next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, September 26, 2017, at 6:00 PM, right here at the memorials hall, our Veterans Memorial Hall. And thank you for that. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks.